What's going on? Then I remember.
I don't see that we're recording.
We are on air now.
My friend's on her way to the airport right now.
Recording in progress.
She got stuck in it.
She's stuck in the traffic.
Yeah, they went like hours earlier than they think.
All right, good evening, everyone. It is 6:30 PM on Wednesday, October 2nd, 2024. And this is a meeting of the school committee. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel. This meeting will be broadcast live through the local access cable channel and on the public access Facebook page and will be found on Lunenburg Access YouTube channel within 24 hours after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by open meeting law. First item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. If you please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public comment. I'll open it to public comment from the public. Seeing none, I'll open it up to the school committee. Ms. Arshinbo.
I just have a quick public comment. I want to, because it was Dave Passios's very last meeting with the Finance Committee last week, I just want to thank him for his service to the town and all the different ways that he's done that, and wish him the very best as he pursues a new adventure.
Thank you.
I wanted to just shout out at the top of the meeting that the Lunenburg PACSEL, which is the parent advisory council supporting all learners for parents of children, of students on an IEP 504 receiving special education services, their support group is meeting in person tomorrow night, October 3rd, at 6:00 PM in the middle school project room. So I wanted to just say that at the top of the meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Beardmore.
So first of all, echo your comments about Mr. Passios. Dave and I frequently disagree, but it's always, it's always a good conversation, and he makes you think. And he did remind me when I stopped to wish him well this weekend, that the Green Communities Committee does not have a residency requirement, and he's not really going anywhere. So for whatever that's worth. I wanted to take a moment, I think our last meeting here, I recognized the Lunenburg High School football cheerleaders who continue to do an extraordinary job. But I wanted to take a moment to recognize a Lunenburg High School marching band who, to quote the football announcer, is a small but mighty organization led by our student representative and a small band, literally, of outstanding musicians and a really courageous bunch to go out there and take the field for our home football games. So thank you and congratulations.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Chair's report. Rep. Skarsdell reached out. She has a follow-up Zoom meeting planned of the coalition that we had from our meeting in Groton. This one will be a larger coalition to look at revamping the Chapter 70 Funding Formula this coming Tuesday, October 8th. Districts that either hold harmless or similar to the whole harmless districts. I will be in attendance. There's been some talk on social media about the Snack Shack. This has definitely been an issue that has been covered in the past, if you're going all the way back to early February 2023 on our agenda, and also our district policies. You can look at 3701.03, which is in regards to the Snack Shack. Also on our website, the Food Services page, under the Policies and Procedures. You can also look at the Nishoba Board of Health, which is in charge of the food safety. The district has made many investments and improvements to the Snack Shack, and also there's been a lot of support throughout the booster, especially the King family. And even TJ Loughlin on Facebook too, had shared a lot of information and combined a lot of that information. But if people do have questions or concerns about the Snack Shack, they should also reach out to the superintendent and the principal of high school as well. The PTO, so if anybody's looking for some good gear to take to the games, wear some Lunenburg gear, the PTO is selling some Lunenburg merch, sweatshirts, shirts, sweatpants. You have to order it by October 18th, and it supports the PTO and Lunenburg Public Schools and the students. You can find the Lunenburg PTO website literally by Googling it, but if you want to go to their direct page, it's lunenburgpto.ptboard.com, and you can purchase some Lunenburg merchandise. I also wanted to give a shout out also to Dave Passios, who is moving to New Hampshire. I did serve on the TC Passios Design Committee with him, as well as the Capital Planning Committee, and he was a strong presence at the school committee meetings and town meetings. Always appreciated his feedback and his dedication to the town. He is also being awarded the Lunenburg Alumni Award recipient on October 20th, the Alumni Reunion Banquet. There's apparently four days left to register, and it's on October 20th. They do have a Facebook page, Lunenburg Alumni Association, and there will also be a table at Homecoming. Their email address is lunenburgalumni@gmail.com, and you can reach out to them for more information. I also reached out to the DPW Director in regards to a public comment about trucks. So I just wanted to read the response that I got from Bill Bernard, from the DPW, the DPW Director. He stated that the Chapter 90 funds may be used for the purchase of long-term lease of road building equipment, machinery, and tools that are specifically related to Chapter 90 project or benefit Chapter 90 work. Chapter 90 funds can be used to purchase trucks with a GVW greater than 27,000 pounds. However, Chapter 90 funds cannot be used to purchase equipment and tools used for seasonal and/or general maintenance, such as snowplows, ice equipment, and guardrail mowers. He stated that he watched the section of the school committee meeting on September 4th, where we discussed capital funding requests, and unfortunately, the DPW does not have any hand-me-down trucks. Like Mr. Beardmore stated, the DPW also has older trucks and will be asking for capital funds for new trucks. And that's all I have. Next item on the agenda is the Student Representatives Report.
Thank you. For the overall district, there is no school on October 14th. Your books are available to order for Lunenburg Middle High School, and lunches are free for the 24-25 school year. For Lunenburg High School, the college rep visits have started in the high school. The fall athletics are in full swing for Lunenburg High School as well as the middle school. The PSAT registration is now open for 10th and 11th grade. For Lunenburg Middle School, there's a meeting on October 8th about Washington DC trips for eighth graders, and there was a Western Dance last Friday, September 27th. For Turkey Elementary School, pennywars have started this Monday, and Grade 5 Nature's Classroom is from October 8th to October 11th. And for the primary school, World Smile Day is October 4th. Students are encouraged to wear smiley faces to school that day. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is to review and approve minutes. We have regular session minutes from August 16th, 2024, and September 4th, 2024. Were there any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve the minutes of September 16th, oh, sorry, August 16th and September 4th.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Next item on the agenda, review and approve line item transfers, warrants or any donations.
Those weren't, oh, they just appeared. Nevermind.
Do we have anything?
No donations and no line item transfers this evening.
Next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to announce that our Director of Facilities and Grounds, Mr. Heavy, has given us his notice that he'll be leaving Lunenburg. We've already reached out to previous applicants, and the position has been posted. We will be looking to fill this critical position as quickly as possible, but I want to thank Mr. Heavy for all the good work he has done for Lunenburg over the last year with us. The administration is grateful for all of his efforts in attending to multiple urgent and competing priorities over the last year. A few reminders, PACSEL was on my list. Again, that's tomorrow evening at the middle high school at 6:00 PM. PTO next Monday, 7:00 PM at the middle high school. Our next school committee meeting will be Wednesday, October 16th, at 6:30 from the middle high school. That will be a hybrid meeting. Schools and offices will be closed on Monday, October 14th, as we observe the Columbus Day, Indigenous Peoples' Day holiday. Reminder for parents that parent-teacher conferences at the middle high school are coming up this month. They'll be holding parent-teacher conferences on the afternoon of Tuesday, October 22nd, and in the evening on Thursday, October 24th. As a reminder, Tuesday, October 22nd, will be an early release day for the middle high school students only to allow for the parent-teacher conferences. And really, the most important thing, I'll echo again, Homecoming. You cannot miss Homecoming. Homecoming is Saturday, October 19th. Float Parade is at noon, leaving from Turkey Hill Elementary School. The theme for float this year is Disney movies. The Lions Club will be holding their cookout immediately following the parade, and the game against Clinton begins at 1:30. Go Blue Knights.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions or concerns? Comments? Seeing none, next item on the agenda is the presentation, the police, SRO, and comfort dog.
So we'll turn it over to Lieutenant Thibodeau.
Will we put the power on?
Sure thing.
Thank you for having us tonight, Lieutenant Javithi, Lunenburg Police, Officer Cam Monroe, and Officer McNamara, our two SROs here. To introduce Officer Cam Monroe. Cam was a Lunenburg High School graduate of 2014.
If you're going to talk, I guess, just have him on if you're going to talk. That's all. Thank you. Sorry about that. I was waiting for Anthony.
So Cam was a Lunenburg High School graduate in 2014. He has his Associate's Degree in Criminal Justice from Mount Wachusett Community College. He graduated the Randolph Police Academy in 2020, and he attended the NASRIL Training, Certified School Resource Officer Training in 2022. He also has attended numerous professional development trainings for adolescents, mental health training, Alice, an alert trainer, school safety, fair and impartial policing, Dean Chris, servant officer, recognizing the warning signs of school shooters, FBI Behavioral Threat Assessment Training, crisis intervention training, civilian response to active shooter events trainer, National Child Passenger Safety Certified Technician, Critical Incident Liaison to the District Attorney's Office in Worcester County, and a crisis intervention certified. He has taken numerous professional development classes. When we introduced that, we were interested in a second SRO, and has been training ever since then to professionally develop himself into this role. He's done an excellent job with that, and I can't condemn him anymore in his willingness to take these trainings. This is all extra training above and beyond what we already have. I'm pleased to introduce Officer Cam Monroe.
Thank you for having me tonight. I've been working over the last year, the last school year, I was a fill-in for Officer McNamara whenever he was out. I had the opportunity to go into the schools and be with each different school individually. And as the years went on, and they started talking about the second position being assigned to Turkey Hill and the primary school, I was able to spend more time with those kids in the different age levels, lunchtime, recess, getting dropped off at school, and it's a great opportunity. Already, I have good experiences with the kids, good times, and it's just a great position overall, and thank you for having me.
Let me go to the next slide?
Yeah.
Sure. Thank you.
Next, we ask for an update on the Comfort Dog, Hank. Officer McNamara and Hank have accomplished and helped countless individuals in both Lunenburg Schools, the town of Lunenburg, and surrounding communities. Hank provides unmeasurable comfort and security daily to the students and faculty of the Lunenburg Schools, along with emergency call-outs to area schools and organizations throughout New England in their most vulnerable time of need. The importance of the Comfort Dog has been an invaluable asset to the Lunenburg Police Department, Lunenburg Schools, and the town of Lunenburg. Right now, Officer McNamara volunteers Hank to the town of Lunenburg and its schools. Hank is approaching retirement. Nobody really knows that date except for Hank, and the department coming forward to fund the program will be requesting additional funds of approximately $19,572.47 based on FSLA and CBA guidelines for care training and maintaining the canine. That going forward will be in the FYI 26 budget for care, according to the CBA. And right now, it's just an update status of where we're at with Hank. Hopefully, he continues on for more years, but like I said, the dog decides when they're done. How old's Hank now?
He actually turns nine October 30th. So he's getting up there. He still loves coming to work. He still works, you know, he's still happy, but as you all know, right, I wish he could work forever. I hope I'm going to retire someday. I wish he could work as long as I could, but that's not realistic for a dog. So as long as he's willing and happy, I'm willing to have him, but there comes a point in time when a dog just doesn't want to put up with a thousand kids poking, prodding, and petting him. So when that time comes and he tells me he's done, then I'm going to respect his choice, but until he, as long as he wants to work, I will drive him around and be his chauffeur because that's what he does.
He knows you're talking about him.
Oh, yeah.
That's nuts, like he's basking in it.
He's smart. He knows what he's doing.
Yeah.
If I could, I'd just like to thank you all for being here tonight, and I'd really like to thank Chief Gammel. It's been a long time plan in the works to get a second SRO for our schools, and I am very, very appreciative of that. And we've gotten to know Cam Monroe over the last couple of years, and he's going to be a nice addition at Turkey Hill and the primary school, so welcome, Officer Monroe.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. I'll open it up to the committee for questions and comments. Ms. Arshinbo.
I don't have any questions, but I'd like to thank Officer Monroe for doing this for our students. It's a very important position, and we are delighted to have him. And I also want to thank Officer McNamara and Hank for traveling around. I am not a dog person, but I do like Hank.
How can you not be a dog person?
I'm not a dog person, but I do like Hank. That's pretty good.
Very suspect.
Mr. Beardmore.
I have some comments and a few questions. So first of all, Officer Monroe, welcome. I obviously don't need to welcome you to Lunenburg. You've been here probably your whole life, I would imagine, but it's a pleasure to welcome a fellow alumnus of Lunenburg High School to the team and to know that you are going to be part, a regular part of our younger kids' lives and visible in their schools, as well as bringing a critically important additional safety component to our schools. And you hate to bring up the worst situations, but there's very recent history that tells us that SROs save lives, potentially lots of lives. And I'm glad to have that, you and Brad as resources who are there in the event that something bad happens. It's very important to have your presence. I do have a question relative to your role in both of those schools. Will you be parking a cruiser in front of those schools when you are in those buildings, or how is that going to work?
So as of right now, I am still driving a fully marked line car, so every day that I'm there, I do park in front of the schools at the visitor section of both schools when I'm there.
Okay. Okay. So now my, this is a comment slash question, but I think that, and I copied the superintendent and the chief lieutenant, unfortunately, I didn't realize that you would be presenting today, but I assume the email was forward, and Officer McNamara. The discussion around Hank's retirement dates back to at least the beginning of this year during Chief Gammel's presentation to the Finance Committee, when he brought the issue of Hank's age and first discussed it publicly. And I immediately contacted him and said, how do we make sure that we're ready when that time comes? And there was some misunderstanding, perhaps on my part, in terms of what the costs were. I went back and watched the video, and I'm pretty sure I understood what was described, what I thought was described as a one-time cost, but it is presented here as an annualized cost, and it has to do not with the cost of the dog itself, but the cost of the care and training of the dog on an annualized basis. And my understanding is that a good chunk of that money, and again, I want to stipulate, this is police department budget money. It's not school department budget money. But a good chunk of that money is overtime money that is then used for the purposes of training of the dog, and I believe that understanding is correct. Please correct me if I'm wrong. One hour a day in overtime that is paid that way. And that is the result of what I understand to be a confluence of how the regulations are set up in the state of Massachusetts and our CBA. And I'll get to my question in a second, but the observation is, is that seems like a lot of money. And the obvious question is, is why can't that be done within an eight-hour day? Why does that have to be done within a nine-hour day?
So it's 1984, sorry, 1985 Supreme Court case that actually decides this. They call it the Garcia decision. And it's not just for me, it's essentially any canine officer has to be compensated for care, maintenance, and training. So that's across the state. The town approached us, and that's what they wanted to put in our contract for the CBA. That's how they want to word it. But let's put, let me put it to you this way. Let's say I have a new dog, and I have to bring him up to training, right? That's covered in my hour of maintenance. So let's say it's two days, it's two days a week for the first two years of his life, right? That's covered in that hour of care and maintenance. Well, if it's any time after, let's say the training's normally at 5 o'clock, if I didn't have that, I would get a four-hour minimum, because our contract says if we're called back to work, it would be a four-hour minimum. So it covers stuff like that. It covers the care and maintenance, and for anyone that's had a puppy, so right now, it's for department-owned property, right? So it's for caring for department-owned property. That's where the Garcia decision came from, and then the town elected to put it in our contract that way.
And I, I'm not, my reason for my question is not to be accusatory. My reason for my question is I want this to be as transparent as possible, because as everybody here knows, budgets are tight, right? And so I appreciate you taking the time to explain that. My understanding is that Hank is your dog, and the intent would be that the next dog would be donated to the town and would be the town's dog. Is that a?
Yeah, correct, because right now, I have to cover, I have to carry liability insurance, right? And that liability insurance then has to be, have an umbrella policy that covers the town, and it just becomes this big convoluted thing. When we started this program in 2018, there were no, there was no go-by. There was no one else. It was us and Walpole coming up with this crazy idea, and pretty soon as it started taking off, even when Chief Marino was here, said, hey, I'll do it for this one, but the next one, we have to figure out a way to, you know, take it under the town's wing. It would be no different. He'd live with me, he'd do everything with me, but it would just be, you know, it makes life easier as far as liability, everything else goes.
You carry personal liability insurance?
I carry liability insurance for him that the town reimburses me for because it's an umbrella policy that covers the town as well.
Right.
Right? So it's this whole big convoluted thing that if it was a town-owned dog, they'd just throw it on their.
It gets a lot easier.
They throw, yeah, they throw it on their town insurance, and they call it a day.
Okay. And lastly, you know, I don't want, you know, I don't want my comments to be convoluted in any way, shape, or form. I am 100% in favor of Hank and all of Brad's contributions and what you have brought to the town and the difference that you've made, and, you know, I personally think it's well worth more than the, you know, the price tag here, but I do want, I do want this to be as transparent as possible moving forward, because this is not, it's not a freebie. It's an essential in my view, but it is not a freebie.
Thank you. Ms. Przazowski.
I had three questions. Number one, does Officer Monroe have plans for a dog as well? Are you a dog guy? No pressure, I'm just curious.
So then we would be adding another $19,000.
I know.
There's just costs associated with it that we have to go by our CBA and what was put in it, you know, it's.
Okay, but that's also an officer temperament thing. You can't just hand a dog to any officer and say, train it.
No, no. Officer McNamara and Hank go through a ton of professional development throughout the entire year, throughout the entire process of Hank. It's not just a one-time, one-time training and it's a whole professional development throughout the whole.
Commit, so I was just curious. You don't have to commit to it. I'm just asking if that was something that you had wanted to or wanted to. Oh, please do that. Walking around the school with a cat on a leash. The second question is, can you explain to me why flex time won't work? Because you don't work in the schools during the summer, and I know that I had gotten an explanation, but can you explain again why flex time won't work as far as instead of, in lieu of overtime?
Because the town proposed to put it in our contract that way, so it's, I don't quote me, this isn't verbatim, but it basically says the town agrees to pay an hour of overtime a day for care as a reasonable compensation for care and maintenance of a department-owned dog. That's what our, that's pretty, I'm pretty good at remembering the contract, and that's like the Reader's Digest version of it. So that was the town's decision through the last town manager and the last negotiations. They proposed putting that in our contract, and the problem is, is that's what we're stuck with.
It's the CBA.
It's there, so that's, that's kind of where we're stuck.
No, I just wanted to know. And do other towns do it? I'm going to ask you, because I think that you're at the forefront of this and know what. I'm gonna ask you, because I think that you're at the forefront of this and know what other towns do, because you've been a pioneer in this in Massachusetts. What do other towns do?
Depends on the town. Some towns, they get the hour. Some towns, they do it different ways. It all, it legitimately, and it depends on the town. You know, it just, it's town by town, how they do things. There's no, you know, they have to compensate them somehow, but it just depends on how the town has it set up.
Okay.
And this, this was, last one was set up off of the patrol dog, right? That's, that's what the thought was. And it just kind of carried on to the next town-owned dog.
Okay. And my third and final question is, can you talk about how Hank enables you to do your job and the ways that he allows you to more effectively get your job?
Yeah, I mean, I think, like to think I'm somewhat approachable, but, I mean, Hank gets me 75% of the way there. There are kids that would not, right, that would not even give me the time of day until they meet Hank and they want to come see Hank, and then he opens the door to conversation. That's, he's a conversation starter. He relaxes kids. If you ask Mrs. Valley, I walked out today, because we went down to Bonjour School with him, and she came back and she said there was about 1,000 people at your door looking for you and the dog. So it gets people into my office, it starts conversations, and then from there, we can build relationships. And if they're struggling with coming to school, they're struggling with their grades, we get to know each other, and then I'm the first person to say, like, hey, how are your grades? You better get them up. Like, come on, you can do this. And that's, that's our role there. And I tell the kids all the time, our role is to keep you out of trouble and keep you on the straight and narrow, not get you in trouble. And he helps me break down those barriers to get those kids to open up. You know, and without him, I wouldn't have, I would have a really hard time doing, doing things the way I do it.
I can say, every time I see you on the school property, I can't think of a time that I have not seen you interacting with a kid while we're in each other's vicinity on a school property. It happened Friday night at a football game. We were chatting about something, and a student who was probably, I don't know, 11, 12 years old, who was alone, you know, very modestly dressed, clearly a shy kid, came up to you, started chatting, and you got into a conversation about grades and, and talking with them about, what about this class and that class? And, you know, and it, it, in my mind, and just watching it very briefly, it was two things. Number one, that kid was walking around alone on the property on a, on a Saturday afternoon, I guess it was Saturday afternoon, we had a day game, you know, and clearly wanted to come to the game and be part of the community. And Brad was part of their community and made them to feel welcome, you know, in a, in a space that was a mixture of kids kind of running free and adults and a football game. And then secondly, that somebody really cared about that kid and their well-being. And, you know, that's really important, particularly, you know, we, we unfortunately don't have, at events like that, a huge outpouring of faculty and staff at our events. And, and, you know, Brad goes the extra mile and serves that purpose unlike anything I've ever seen, and I've been around a long time, so.
Thank you. Mrs. Scullbrini?
So, this is really sort of a question to all three of you, but in my day job, I deal with police a lot. I'm a criminal defense attorney primarily in New Hampshire. I've had the opportunity to interact with thousands of police officers, some of whom I consider friends, some of whom do not consider me a friend. And I, and I will say this. There, there are two things that are really important, and I mainly say this, Officer Monroe, for your benefit. Chief Gamble is a different kind of chief of police. He is a person that is insightful, that is wise, and he has done things that I don't think I've ever seen other chiefs of police do, especially in small towns. Oftentimes, especially in more rural places in New Hampshire, the chief of police acts as sort of like the de facto mayor. Everybody knows him, and so that's sort of how they work. And Chief Gamble does that. But he also does things like starts a comfort dog program and, you know, asks for a social worker for the police department. That is a really big difference between what some police departments and police chiefs do and what good police departments and good police chiefs do. So I think that, understanding that you are coming into a situation, and that you've been there already, so I'm sure you've seen this, but his way of doing things is different and it's better. And then the second thing I want to say is, I think that, in a, when my family moved here three and a half years ago, the only person who we knew by first name was Hank.
That's about right, 90% of the town. I had Hank.
It took a long time before we were able to figure out what Brad's name is. That, that level of, of difference and, you know, like the way in which you've been able to inculcate good relationships with people, I, I think it, it makes a difference not only in terms of like the kids, but I anticipate that in you doing your job, you're able to, on occasion, cut things off at the pass before they get bad. And so like, it's the very best model of community policing. And I hope, Officer Monroe, that you take to heart the example that Brad and the chief and that everybody in the department sets. Because they understand that community policing is best policing. It also happens to be the cheapest kind of policing. It's the one that doesn't cost us a ton of money. And I'd rather spend $19,000 on Hank every day of the week than $19,000 on, you know, armor plates or a bear cat or any of that kind of stuff. So I, I just want to make sure, like, this place is special. It's special because of the people, and I hope that that continues with you, and I think it will.
Thank you. I would echo what my colleagues had said earlier. I would also thank just the Lunenburg Police Department in general as a whole for having that strong relationship with the Lunenburg Public Schools. I look at Officer McNamara and Hank as, as kind of the role models too for Officer Monroe and really sets the bar high. You've done an amazing job. Officer Monroe, I appreciate that you are a graduate of Lunenburg Public Schools and that you've taken all this training that connects to the Lunenburg Public School students. I'm excited for, to have you on board, and I think you'll do a great job. I'm excited for that. I did have one question, just really for the public sake. I think this was a surprise to a lot of the public that we're getting a second SRO. I think it was a good surprise. But if you could just speak a little bit to the timeline about adding a second SRO and how it came about?
I think it was FY '23 is when second SRO was put into our budget plan to get to a certain number where we could actually have that extra person in the school. Based on patrol, how many you need on the roads daily, and for all the shifts, we had to get to a certain number, and we also had to have somebody interested and train them. The training is extensive. The, I can't say enough about the professional development that Officer Monroe has gone through and Officer McNamara also goes through. It's, you just don't put a patrol officer in the schools. It's not that easy. There's certain certifications that you have to obtain by law and certain classes that help, help that officer to be in there. And finding the right fit for the officer. Officer Monroe and Officer McNamara are clearly the right fit in, in the schools, based upon the feedback that we get daily, not just on Hank, but on Officer McNamara too. He should be credited with, with spearheading this program and really taking it to a level that is, a level of excellence and professionalism. And Officer Monroe, I have no question, will, will follow, follow those footsteps.
Thank you. And thank you for coming tonight. Is there any other questions or comments?
No.
Dr. Brenner?
I'd just like to say again, thank you for being here tonight, but thank you for partnering with us every single day. It's, it's a nice partnership. I appreciate it.
Yes, Mr. Scullbrini?
Do we have a timeline on Chief Gamble's replacement?
Chief Gamble is retiring on October 18th, and I will be acting chief, it was announced.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Congrats.
Thank you, and congrats. Thank you for coming tonight. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Next item on the agenda, new business. We have an action item, the LEAF representative nomination. So I put this on the agenda. I had Ms. Brzezinski reach out that she was interested in representing LEAF. So I wanted to open it up to the discussion on that and if there was any nominations. Ms. Brzezinski, did you want to speak to it?
I volunteered to do it because it aligns nicely with my history. I used to be on the Lunenburg Cultural Council, which was a grant appropriating organization that did some grant allocations for the schools, so, and fundraising past, so I thought that would be nice.
So, just to be clear-
Mr. Beardmore?
LEAF is the organization that Ms. Kaufman came and talked about.
Yes, it's an educational foundation that they're looking to form. Yes, that was presented earlier this year.
It is not keeping up and me-
Well, it's good for the public to know also what's going on today.
The Lunenburg Education Accelerator Foundation, and they had asked for a student, a student, it's late, a school committee representative. And if I were not on the school committee, I would be, probably be volunteering as a parent to help. So I said I would volunteer to be rep if no one else wanted to do it.
Any other discussion?
I would love to nominate Mrs. Brzezinski to be the representative to LEAF.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Brzezinski.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a discussion on the TC Passios. So, let's see if I can, maybe I'll start the discussion. So I had reached out to the interim town manager after hearing at the Finance Committee that there was a $90,000 debt for the, the building. Let's see if I can pull up my email, sorry.
I have it if you want it.
Oh yeah, it's in our folder. Never mind.
What is the document we're looking for?
New business discussion, TCP school committee.
TCP.
Here you go.
Yeah, so it's a memorandum from the town manager. So this was his response. "As per our exchange and as reported, I had informed the Finance Committee, FinCom, that there was currently a deficit in the TC Passios operational account of roughly $90,000. That deficit has now been eliminated by making transfers from a variety of accounts in the facility and other related deficits. Some have come to believe that this means the school department is not paying their rent. This is not the case at all. To the best of our knowledge and belief, the school department, including before and after-school program, paying $27,000 annually, is currently on all of its rental and operation responsibilities for the building. That said, there are some challenging concerns about how the town pays for and accounts for the expenses for this building. The town has not established an independent budget for this building to take in revenues and account for expenses. It is my understanding that there was an agreement between the two sides of the House as to whom received and processed invoices and the services the school department would provide, mowing and plowing and the like. However, it is further understanding that the division of those responsibilities may not have been reduced to writing. I also think it is generally accepted that there are concerns over the physical conditions of the building and the most imminent repairs that are needed. Toward a resolution of these matters, your superintendent and I have begun discussions on how we might best meet your space needs in a manner that addresses the repair needs of the building, allocates costs and responsibilities, cash and in kind, over the near term, which of, which we have discussed as a period of five years. I would like to thank your superintendent for their sharing of their limited time with us to try to agree the best path forward and the kind understanding of the committee. This process will take a bit of time and may be subject to further observations from the general public that may not fully tracks with the facts on the ground." So I'll open it up, discussion about the, the response, but also just the TC Passios building in general. Mr. Scullbrini?
So, I, mainly because I'm on the Policy Subcommittee, and we meet on Friday semi-regularly at TC Passios, I am not really understanding why we are there, because the building is not easy to use. On a couple of occasions, like when my, when we switched email, I went down to find the IT person, and I walked into a, a room that was like decrepit and moldy, and I realized I was in the wrong place. It, it, it doesn't make sense to me that we should continue using this building that is not suitable to our needs as, as a favor for the town, and then for the town to be like, hey, what are we doing? Like, we don't want to be there. I don't think it's useful for us to have a building that large for such a few number of people, and we have space elsewhere in town. Like, my understanding is that Brooks House is, you know, also decrepit, but it's smaller and they're using it to store files. I think that, at one point, we talked about having space at Turkey Hill. I mean, if it were up to me, and it's not, but if it were up to me, I would say, town, do whatever you want with your own buildings. We're done with this building. It does not suit our purposes. The really valuable part of that building is the fact that it's adjacent to the main part of school campus. But Turkey Hill is on the school campus. And so like, if they're asking us to do more for a building that serves us less than what we would want, I, I just don't see why we're doing that. I mean, it, like, I understand that we want to have some comity with the town, and I understand that, you know, we have had that comity in the sense that we were doing work and upkeep on the building, but as our budget has reduced, it has reduced the number of people that work in that building on upkeep, and it means it's really hard for us to do upkeep on such a large building for such a small footprint. So if it were up to me, I would tell the town, thank you for allowing us to use Turkey, or thank you for allowing us to use TC Passios, it is time we go someplace else. This is not our problem.
Thank you.
I'm-
Ms. Brzezinski?
I'm not happy that we have staff in that building. I'm not happy that we have students in that building. I, I don't think we should. There are serious issues with the condition of that building. I'm not sh- I, I wish there were other options to being in that building, and I'd like to explore other options to being in that building. I know that we are limited for space. I think it is time to start having discussions about the options. The, the building is, I think it's past its useful life, which is not something people, we really say much in town about the buildings. We kind of dance around it, but I think it's time that we discussed other options.
Thank you. Mr. Beardmore?
I largely agree with what's been said, but the fact of the matter is, is that that building burned down tonight, we would have a problem tomorrow. So, you know, we, we, there have been discussions about relocating our administrative offices and ACE program to TCP, excuse me, to Turkey Hill, and moving the, the extended day programs back to the, the host schools. I understand that that may be affected by the earlier announcement tonight and the projects that are underway by the Facilities Department, but we're going to also be discussing goals later today. And I, I think resolving this by the end of this school year should be probably on our list of things to do this year. And, and I, I agree. I mean, I, I think the town should knock everything but the gym and the cafeteria off of that building and, and be done with it. But, you know, we, we don't get to make that decision. One other thing that I would like to request a clarification from the town manager and potentially town council is who owns the property and the building? Because there does not seem even today to be a straight answer to that question. This came up in capital planning a year and a half ago. I thought that it was resolved that the building and the underlying property was transferred to the town, but there seems to be some discrepancy on that topic. So I, I would like somebody to say, here's the deed or whatever it is, but once and for all, the town, that the property has been subdivided and the town owns the building.
Was there concern that it's on school property?
The, the concern is, is that the, the property was never subdivided.
Yes. Yeah, it's one big law, especially with Brooks House as well.
And the, the background here is, is that, if you guys recall, at a town meeting a few years ago, we tried to get rid of the Brooks House, but there was, we were going to get rid of the entire school property because of the way the, the article was written. rid of the entire school property because of the way the article was written. There was a proposal a couple of years ago to put a parking lot where Kids' Kingdom is, and it came to the capital planning committee, and I said, well, if you look at the property drawing that came with the proposal, the property is on school department property. Kids' Kingdom is on school department property, or about 80% of it. And Mrs. Lemieux insisted and went and allegedly validated that the property was transferred, and it is town property, but there is still, if you talk to people even in this room, there is disagreement in terms of who owns that property. So, that needs to be resolved post-lease.
So, we've had at length conversation at the building design committee, and it is one lot. It is on school property, but the town owns all school property land as well, so it is town property.
Well, no, by charter, the school committee has superintendency of all of its properties.
Yes, but the town owns the land. We have to take care of the land, and maybe that's the issue too, that now we're in charge of that land.
But when a decision comes to knock down a building on the property, this comes down to, is this a town meeting decision, or is it a school committee decision?
That would be nice if we could decide to knock it down.
We're knocking buildings down, it better be going to town meeting.
But you understand my point, right? Like, we should resolve this.
They do have to subdivide the lot.
We should resolve this.
Yeah, they're going to have to subdivide the lot, especially if they're talking about tearing down Brook's House or selling it.
Yeah.
Ms. Arshinbo?
Brook's House has also got to be on the list.
First, I want to thank you for clearing this up, because the here and, well, as cleared up as it is, the here and there of the, the school owes all this money, and, I mean, because people don't know, and they just start chatting. So, I appreciate you going to the interim town manager and taking, making sure that he makes perfectly clear that we have paid our bills, first off. Secondly, I think Peter's point is very well taken, that perhaps as a goal, we should figure out how to get out of this building. I mean, I understand how we got there. I've been around long enough to know how we got there, but we, for a whole host of reasons, to me, mostly health reasons, but for a whole host of reasons, the time to get out of that building is past. So, to take this year and look for possibilities of how to do it would be, I think, a good idea. I will go back to the conversation I had with Michael Ray probably four or five years ago, when he said, give me three years, I'll take care of it. So, the municipal building, for a lot of reasons, not just him, but that was, we didn't push on that because we thought the municipal building process was going to take care of that in time, you know, but it didn't. So, I don't know what the plan is moving forward on that, but I, we'll find out later.
That's why I'm next, yeah.
He's got some very individual reports.
So, maybe that will all take care of that, and then that will take care of that. We'll find out.
Thank you. So, Mr. Scullbrini?
I just wanted to ask, before we go on, Dr. Burnham, Dr. Gilson, what do you guys want to do? Like, do we need to know that? I mean, I think we should.
They want to stay.
So, I guess the question from me is, what kinds of options do you want us to explore? We have explored the option of moving down to Turkey Hill. The move can't happen immediately because there aren't phone lines in all of the classrooms. There will be phones in all of the classrooms and lines, which would afford multiple individuals in an office space to be in one classroom, and that is in process because it's part of the 911 compliance upgrade at Turkey Hill. The recabling of the building in order to put these phone lines in is due to begin next Monday, and they are hopeful that they will be finished within four weeks' time. They will work nighttime hours, they'll be in the building from 3:00 to midnight four days a week. So, once those lines are installed and the phones are set up, if the building burned down, we would be able to move over there and function. So, that is, it is an option. It's not ideal for us to have the central office inside a school that isn't in an area that can be cordoned off, if you will, from the academic wing of the building, because you have lots of folks in and out to central office every day. If the committee would like, we can certainly explore whether there are suitable properties in town that we might be able to lease. But that's up to the committee, if that's an option that you want us to explore.
For 27K that we're paying just for the after-school program, I mean...
That's not a lot of money.
No. So, do you, how many, how much space do you need, and which programs need housing? So, I guess, how many offices do you need? Which programs need to stay together?
Yep. So, if we relocate the ACE program, the special ed office needs to go with it, because our director of special services is the administrator for that day program.
Okay, so how many people is?
There are three in the special services suite, if you will, at TCP.
Okay, but you also work closely with them?
We do.
As far as collaboration, so if you guys weren't, if you weren't located in your...
There's a lot of communication daily, back and forth, between folks in my office, folks in the business office, and special education.
Okay, and then your office is?
My office, and there are two folks in the outer office, the office of the director of finance and administration, there are two small secretary offices, there is a very small office for our food service director, there's space for our facility director, there's one room that we're using currently as the curriculum office, that houses three staff daily, but an additional workspace for times when our EL coordinator joins the curriculum office for some planning. And then we have two classrooms that we use for the ACE program.
So, for me, I wanted to first start off by thanking Ms. Arshinbo for actually bringing this to our attention too, from the finance committee meeting. From my perspective too, from the building design committee, that whole process had included an addition to the Ritter and a remodel to the Ritter, which would include town and school offices, so that we would be housed in a potential Ritter building that was remodeled. The concern is, how many years out is that, and if it actually even happens? So, that is the concern. And I think, looking at the TC Passios building, it's not going to make it to that amount of time for us to actually survive in that building. So, I would also echo what my colleagues have stated, that we should be working our way out of the building, and I would support a goal in our future agenda item to get out of the TC Passios building, and I think I would also leave it up to the superintendent to know her space needs and figure out which buildings could fit, and whether we have to split up and do it in sections, maybe use the primary school or high school as potential offices too, do whatever it takes, because I think really, for our staff, we should not be in that building, and we can get creative, and even, like you said, possibly leasing a building if that made sense.
Could we do trailers?
And that's the other option too. We could look at trailers too, and if it came down to it that we didn't have the space, we could rent those like portable classrooms and trailer type things.
Does anybody know if there's space at the recently refurbished building that used to be, what was it, the Dragonfly Cafe, and now it's like a realty place?
There's a sign out front, but I don't know that there's space.
I don't think it's the kind of space that we're talking about.
Oh, okay.
And it would not be, it would not accommodate all of the central office.
But I think, instead of us exploring, I would say have the superintendent, we should have the superintendent explore potential buildings, maybe even contact a real estate agent.
Come back to us with some options, maybe some out-of-the-box ones. I am worried about separating you guys, because I do know that you, Dr. Burnham especially, collaborate with your people very well. Every time I'm there, you've got people walking in everywhere from all the different apartments just to check in, and I think that spirit of collaboration, I would hate to lose that by physically separating the offices.
I would say that we're much more efficient and functional if we're all in one location.
Yes, I'm very wary of doling out people piecemeal to schools as we can squeeze them in. I'm also, I don't want to re, so I'm nervous that we're going to react to getting out of TCP with something that we see as temporary, and it's not temporary. I'm worried that we're going to say, well, we're going to do something in the municipal design, we're going to get something built, and then it's a Lunenburg, three years, which is really...
Thirty.
Oh, I was going to say nine, but I think that might be more accurate. Yeah.
Well, and I think we also look at it too, is, are we going to get a new Turkey Hill, a new school for that?
Yeah.
And does the old Turkey Hill come up as an option as well?
Because I don't even want to suggest, like, do we need to put on a small addition to something, because I don't want to explore that, because we don't know what's going to happen with Turkey Hill. But I'm also, I know that things are coming down the pipeline, hopefully quickly, but I feel like we've been in this holding pattern, and I'm very nervous that we would react to getting out of TCP now that it's becoming more emergent, and we would divvy up the offices, and it would become permanent, and I don't want to do that either. So, I want us to be thoughtful.
Is the municipal building committee, I know you've met a couple of times recently...
Yeah, so we've been, like, since the first meeting, and we had a second meeting, again, working on the RFP to get the design process, to get the actual dollar amounts we could bring it to the town.
And this would be for the, basically, for the Ritter?
For the Ritter, the Ritter addition, and a remodel of the town hall as well.
So, all together?
All together, all, two buildings, three, if you count the addition.
Theoretically, that would solve the central office problem, however, it's not happening for at least a couple, three years.
How long does it take to get the plans, get the approval, and the buildings?
Yeah, we can't keep people, I don't think, I do not believe that we should be keeping our people.
I think we're hearing the same thing across the committee. So, Dr. Burnham, do you feel like you have a good direction to go from here?
I think that we do.
Wouldn't you miss the waterfall feature in your office?
I think we will all mourn the loss of a water feature in our offices.
Get a little plug-in waterfall for her new office in the future.
The dripping water will remind you of...
Makes her good stories.
Ms. Scullbrini?
Don't move so far away that you can't respond to kite-related emergencies.
Yes, that is absolutely necessary.
All right, next item on the agenda is the action item for the Spain trip update. I'll turn it over to Dr. Burnham.
Yes, tonight we have Lynn Radford with us. She's the teacher at the high school in the foreign language, the world language department that is facilitating this trip, and she has an update, and it will really require a decision from the committee. So, I'll turn it over to Ms. Radford.
Good evening, thank you, everybody. I first wanted to say thank you for allowing me to be here via Zoom and not in person, which worked out much better for my schedule, I do appreciate it. The update that we have, I'm not sure if the school committee is all aware of this situation. I had sent it accidentally to Ms. Arshinbo, not realizing that Mr. Layton is the new chair of the committee.
They all do have that information.
Great, okay, so what I'm asking for tonight is for the committee to allow us to be a little bit flexible with the dates of our trip. Just to briefly explain, the company that we are using, Walking Tree Travel, which is the company we traveled with last year, and it was a fantastic experience, I'm really glad that we picked them for Spain, but their setup is a little different in that they bill airfare differently, separately than they bill for the cost of the rest of the trip, and they do this so that they can have accurate pricing for families, and they don't have to inflate their pricing to accommodate a variety of situations. Since we planned the trip, of course, the airfare has gone up significantly from what we had all estimated. I do remember Mr. Beerdmore looked up the price real quick when we were doing initial planning, and we were kind of all on the same page, that an $800 estimate was going to be sufficient, and it turns out that is absolutely not sufficient several months later, and of course, nobody has any control over that, right? It's just the state of the world and the way pricing works. So, the company came to me and requested that I come before you and get a possible approval to change the dates by one day. So, we're going from, right now, planned to depart on April 17th and to return on April 25th. The entire trip is during school vacation time, and the request is that we switch the date one day earlier, so that we're departing on April 16th, which is a Thursday, that would be a night departure, and returning on April 24th. So, what this means for families is that students would miss the Friday prior to April vacation, which is, has happened in the past, we've had students miss school days for trips. We do try not to do that. And the difference to families would be about a $350 savings per traveler. We have 15 students signed up to take the trip, and we also have two parents joining us as well. So, for those two families, it would actually be a $700 savings, because they're paying for themselves and for their child.
Thank you. I'll open up to any questions or comments. Ms. Arshinbo?
Yeah, I'm okay with this. I mean, stuff like this happens, it's one day, the families, according to what you've written, the families understand it's an unexcused absence, and, you know, that's the choice they make. If they were traveling with their own families, they would, chances are, make the same choice. So, I'm okay with it.
Thank you. Ms. Brzezowski?
I'm, why wouldn't it be an excused absence? Because it's for a field trip that we've ruled, we've deemed educational enough that it's a school-sponsored field trip, so why wouldn't this be an excused absence? Because one of the, our policy says, trips that are educational in nature can, with the permission of the principal, be an excused absence.
I think it takes us back to the conversation that's been a concern for Mr. Beerdmore, is that this is not a trip that's truly accessible for all students, so...
If I could speak, I would agree with Dr. Burnham. I did, the information that I had delivered to families, and I realized this isn't my decision, but was to err on the side of caution and give the same explanation, that this is not a trip that all students are taking, it is an elective experience for students. It's also not just happening during the school day, and so, something like the college fair, for example, would be different, where it's not, not all students can go, but it's happening during the day. But I did make that, as I had stated, clear to parents that the possibility is that it would be an unexcused absence for that reason.
Thank you. Mr. Beerdmore?
I will abstain from this, but I have absolutely no objection to the request. I just abstaining just because I abstained from the, or may have even voted against the initial one, so, but I will abstain from this.
Thank you.
And again, thank you for watching the price, and I know this has probably caused a bunch of stress for you, like, watching the flight prices and being nervous about that, so thank you for, you know, keeping on top of things. I do appreciate it.
Agreed.
Of course, yeah, and that's, that is the reason that I chose this company, because it was more cost-efficient for families to travel with this setup. I mean, like we've said, things happen, we, even with the inflated cost, we would still be coming in under the price of the next best company that we found, but this date... be coming in under the price of the next best company that we found, but this date shift would still allow us to remain significantly less than that.
Thank you, and thank you for bringing this back to us.
Do we need to make?
I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to allow the Spain trip to start one day earlier as a way to reduce the costs.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? Uh, aye, sorry, aye, and then, any abstentions?
Aye.
Uh, the motion passes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, good work.
Next, we have action item, facilities and grounds report.
The action here would be just to accept the report. You have a report in your packet. There's not a lot of significant change since the last one, but I would invite Dr. Gilson to share a little bit about her experience this afternoon relative to the process we are engaging in with the Turkey Hill ADA study.
So I first want to say thank you, everybody, for the last school committee meeting where you voted to be involved with the project. So I have been able to consequently stick to the timelines, and the advertisements went on as scheduled, posted in the Central Register, posted.
In the Sentinel, and posted on the town of Lunenburg bid area, and then also posted on the business section of the school website. So today was scheduled the optional visit for vendors. We had a phenomenal response, and so I talked to people about the proposal, so there was great interest today, and toured them around the building with Norm Yvonne, who's the building principal at Turkey Hill right now. They asked a lot of questions. They had already been to Google Earth to take snapshots of the, the building, to notice where the solar panels were. They understood our needs to focus on the building envelope, and also to focus on the MEP, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing needs, focus on, they were so excited to see the boiler, and they were, like.
It's an impressive room, I gotta tell you, it's, it's cool.
So, anyway, so I had, like, 15 people, like, clipping, like, really, like, they brought all their cell phones, they were taking pictures of everything we showed them on the tour, because that would go into the, like, their bids. So, so we're actively on schedule, they obviously couldn't wait to come, and, you know, so it meant for, I, we did the tour, like, four o'clock, the last people left at, like, 5:30. We saw every single room, and we opened up the elevator so they could get a sense of what the elevator looked like, which is a little scary, but, but it was really a phenomenal experience, and so I, I think that, you know, we'll see how many actual bids do come in, right? And then we'll evaluate, and, you know, hopefully, we'll have people from the school committee that would like to be a part of the evaluation of the designer that we'll select, and they're very, they're very understanding in terms of what the expectations for the project will be, and in, in terms of our expectation that they communicate through either a memo to the school committee, and they, or they have, and/or they have someone who's able to come and talk to you directly at the meetings about the status of the phases of the project. And so Phase One, you know, what we're expecting is, you know, and I'm not sure if I, I don't have the proposal right in front of me, but Phase One is, is, I believe it's ADA compliance and all the needs for that. Phase Two is really taking a look at noting the life cycle of major, you know, systems inside the building, like the boiler, and noting the electrical, and, you know, like, for example, today, like, we were walking through, again, people were taking pictures of the outlets that are rising up from the floor, and the cafeteria, people have positioned strategically because they are trip hazards. So it's like noticing that, and just aspects of the building, like where the asbestos was abated, where it was not, and where it was sealed up, you know, and also understanding that the building does get cold at certain junctures, like on certain days during the winter, like, so cold, you know, so it was exciting. I almost wished I had invited you to come along so you could sense, like, what it was like to be, I mean, you know, the, yeah, the, a lot of engineers and architects and things, and they were all, like, really interested in evaluating the project and the proposal, so.
It's great news.
Thank you, yeah, yeah, I think so too.
Thank you so much for taking the lead on this and, and taking this on. I, we appreciate it so much.
Well, thank you for giving me feedback on the project.
And I am so excited about this, like, I was a little worried nobody would show up, like, when, I.
Well, so, quite frankly, so was I, you know, but you have to actually take a lead.
Like, I was honestly.
And, and so.
I was worried no one would come, and then I saw, because I, I had seen it was today, and I'm like, oh, no, please, somebody come, and then you, I'm so excited that people responded.
It was a great thing, great response.
Yeah, I think the challenge too is, is it's pricing it right when we put it out on the market, same thing with the TC Passius too, and the building design committee.
Sure, so, I'm very excited for when the, when, can you, I don't have a sheet in front of me, can you refresh me when those bids are due and when the review?
October 16th.
Oh, that's so soon!
Yes, so, like, I anticipate, like, that's why I really needed you to give me some feedback, because the timeline strategically, like, it runs all the way through, like, if we didn't start now, we wouldn't have a result coming in at different junctures, and to get the result, I mean, the final report now, if pending everything staying on schedule, will be April 29th.
This is fast.
You know, but, yeah, but we, we need that to be.
Oh, yeah.
Information generated, so we had excellent teams that came today, and I'm excited.
That's very encouraging.
Okay.
Thank you.
Result.
Can you?
As the son of a civil engineer, who is many times as a child taken to watch pavement be laid down, I can tell you this excitement will not abate. They'll always be excited about this stuff.
But, believe me, my, my husband is an engineer too, and my son is likely to be one as well.
It's great, great.
Yeah, I can't wait until the, I'm curious what we'll get for the bids and what they'll be able to do, but I'm very, I'm, I like this timeline, it's tight.
Yes, fast.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Do we need to do action on this?
Is there any questions or comments about the facilities and grounds report?
No, you know, I mean, I, I continue to be frustrated with the security upgrades, and we're gonna get there, I know, we will, but.
Was this the total facilities report?
Yeah, I'll look for a motion to accept the report.
I did have a question about the door, is that on schedule? Because I have concerns.
So, the engineers are, for these projects, are also coming on the 16th?
We have a meeting on the 16th. They have been given the asbestos update from, from the meeting that we held in September. So the direction they're taking is they're going to revise the proposal, and I'm hoping to get it out to bid by mid-November at the latest. So with that, they also shared with us the information that the doors, actually, they're custom doors, and they will take two months to build. So from the time, you know, so it's, however quickly we can get this out to bid, I understand the urgency and I understand the concern, and so, you know, I also understand that there may be some requirements that we really need to look into if the construction of the doors, or, first of all, the doors need to be built, and then the installation, if, if they're installed while school is technically in session, then we may need to get some sort of a waiver from the state. So I, I am gonna need to, like, you know, investigate that, and so it may be possible to get completed prior to the end of the year, and hopefully, we can do that.
We discussed today at a leadership meeting, the urgency for prioritization of a couple of key doors.
Right.
As soon as possible.
Yeah.
If the rest have to wait to be installed over the summer?
Then that's.
That's fine?
Yeah.
For these doors, the specific ones I'm talking about, how long does the actual installation take? The part that's going to require maybe a waiver? Not the ordering, not the, but actually physically putting them into place, do you know?
I have not gotten a definite answer yet.
Like, is this a summer?
Well, the difficulty is that the, we're at the phase in this process, the bid process, where we're still with the engineers. It won't be until we actually get the bid on the doors for those folks to tell us how long it takes for them to install, because they're the ones that will be doing that work.
And, and I think too, like, going out to bid, I mean, you know, it's, it's timelining it, and it needs to be posted so that, minimum of like two weeks, so that people can actually build. The one I just put out for the ADA, we put it in so that it could bid, and there's, like, so there's three weeks of a timeline, like, it's posted, clearly people got the message, and, you know, and that was a thrill for, for me. And, but, but we are expecting the submission date to be three weeks from the date of the posting, so we've had the informational meeting, and, and things will go along as planned. But you can't bid out and expect to, like, have people submit bids in a week, because that just won't work, so.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I'll look for a motion to accept the report.
I'll make a motion to accept the facilities update report.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes, thank you, everyone. Next item on the agenda is third read policies, facilities policies, concussion policy, Chapter 766 policy. So we take turns reading the policy? Was there any feedback on the policies?
Mrs. Peterson's on the call tonight, I'll just double-check one more time that we did not have any feedback on the posted policies.
No, we did not.
Thank you.
What do we want to start with first?
We can try to go in order if there's an order to it.
Which order do you want to go in, because it's hard to read the?
Laura, you can start, if you'd like.
All right, which order are we going in?
Your pick.
By name or, oh, boy, that's not.
Just do the first one in the.
I'd do the first one on the list.
Is it sorted by?
I sort by last.
Yeah, what do you sort by?
What do you sort by? I sort by last modified.
Yeah, that's my sort too.
I'm sorting by last modified.
I didn't touch it, aye.
Exactly, I think it might be, do you have copy of, copy of, copy of five security cameras first?
I have copy of, copy of, copy.
She went by last modified, there was one modified today.
I have copy of, copy of, copy of, final draft.
Yes, the, just a word on the one that was modified today, that was a brand-new policy that did not exist prior, so Liz and I went through the current policies to figure out where it should be placed within the policy manual that exists, which is what was added, but we also added the legal references for this particular policy as well.
So should that be a third read, or should we recycle that?
I think it's the, it's the policy language itself.
We posted it.
It's, it's posted.
So this is the third read, okay. In the future, can we just change the names of them so they're not copy of, copy of, copy of?
Yeah, the names.
Because I don't have the ability to read things, because I'm not the owner, and it just, okay, so should we start with 1408, relations with non-public schools?
Sounds good.
Where's that?
Okay, uh, community relations, relations with local area and government agencies, governmental agencies, relations with non-public schools, 1408.
I don't have that one.
Well, I, I don't see.
Refresh, this one's from 5:33 PM.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
5:32?
Is it the? Yes, community relations.
Got it, got it.
Yep, that's the, yes.
Concussion.
No, that's the, uh, private school approval, but the brand-new.
So, this one's 1408, relations with non-public schools, am I on the right one?
Yes.
In order to educate students of compulsory school age six through 16 in Massachusetts, a private school must obtain the approval of the school committee in the city or town in which the school is located. The Massachusetts Compulsory School Attendance Law, 766 Mass. General Laws, Chapter 76, Section 1, sets the standard by which school committee must evaluate private schools. The school committee may approve a private school when it is satisfied that the private school's instruction complies with all legal requirements. Religious instruction shall not be evaluated as part of the approval process. Approval requires the following. One, the private school submits a letter of application to the superintendent of schools. Two, the private school completes all items on the checklist for approval of a private school and submits the required documentation. Three, the superintendent or designee reviews the submitted materials. Four, the superintendent or designee visits the private school. Five, the private school makes a presentation to the school committee. Six, the superintendent makes a recommendation to the school committee. Seven, the school committee takes formal action on the recommendation, and eight, the school, private school is notified of the school committee's decision. The private school shall have the burden of production for all documents related to approval. Failure to provide documentation shall result in non-approval. If substantial changes are made in the private school's program, the private school must seek renewed approval. The district will confirm that it has approved the private school, the date with which, the date which the private school commenced operation, and other basic information such as the private school's street and email addresses. Do I need to read the legal references? Okay, can we, I'm fine with approving it tonight, but can we just add the line breaks between the numbers?
I don't know what that means.
Uh, under approval.
Because like, the number two is in the middle.
No, Peter's reading the right, mine.
Oh, it's different on yours.
It's just formatting.
Yeah, never mind, never mind, that's me, I was reading the wrong format of it, so never mind.
Let me do the concussion one?
Go for it.
Thank you.
Students in instruction 5,000, health and safety 5,700, prevention and management of sports-related head injuries, concussions, policy 5717. It is the policy of the Lunenburg Public Schools, parentheses, LPS, to ensure access to a free and appropriate education for all students within the town of Lunenburg. In order to ensure full access for all student athletes, band members, and other students who engage in extracurricular activities, the LPS will ensure compliance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 111, Section 222, as it pertains to education of students who participate in extracurricular athletic activities, including marching band, regarding the prevention and management of sports-related head injuries. It is the policy of the LPS to establish and regularly review appropriate procedures that comply with MGL, Chapter 111, Section 222, and 105 CMR 201. From the Department of Public Health within the Lunenburg Public Schools, the policy will be reviewed by September 30th, 2013, and every two years thereafter. Procedures will address the following. Designation by the superintendent of the person responsible for the implementation of the policy and procedures. Procedure for providing information and necessary forms and materials to all parents and athletes, including the annual training requirement. Procedure for the school to notify parents when an athlete has been removed from play for a head injury or suspected concussion. Protocol for obtaining medical clearance for return to play and academics after a diagnosed concussion. Parents' responsibility for completion of the pre-participation form or school-based equivalent, and parents' responsibility for completion of the report of a head injury form or school-based equivalent. Inclusion in the student and parent handbooks of information regarding the sports-related head injury policy and how to obtain the policy. Procedures for communicating with parents with limited English proficiency. Annual training of. Annual training of persons specified in 105 CMR 201.007 in the prevention and recognition of sports-related head injury and associated health risks, including second impact syndrome. Medical evaluation and/or yearly physical and a medical or nursing review of concussion history prior to participation in athletics or marching band. Procedure for outreach to parents who do not return completed forms required for students to participate in extracurricular sports, and for how to handle situations where a student verifies completion of the annual training requirement but a parent has not. Instructions to coaches, certified athletic trainers, trainers, and volunteers to teach form, techniques, and skills, to promote protective equipment use, to minimize sports-related head injury, and B, to prohibit athletes from engaging in any unreasonable dangerous athletic technique that endangers the health or safety of an athlete, such as using a helmet or any other sports equipment as a weapon. Procedure for reporting head injuries or suspected concussions sustained during extracurricular activities, athletic activities, to the school nurse and a certified athletic trainer if on staff. Procedure for identifying a head injury or suspected concussion, removing an athlete from practice or completion, and referring for medical evaluation. Procedure from the school to obtain and ensure timely medical or nursing review of report of head injury form or school-based equivalent in the event of a head injury or suspected concussion that takes place during the extracurricular activity season. Procedure for sharing information concerning an athlete's history of head injury and concussion, recuperation, reentry plan, and authorization to return to play and academic activities on a need-to-know basis, consistent with requirements of 105 CMR 201, and applicable federal and state law, including but not limited to the Massachusetts Student Records Regulations 603 CMR 23, and the Federal Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act Regulations 34 CFR Part 99. Procedure for the development and implementation of post-concussion graduated reentry plans to school and academic activities if indicated by person specified in 105 CMR 201.01, E1. The protocol for medical clearance for return to play after a concussion that at minimum complies with 105 CMR 201.011. Penalties, but not limited to personal sanctions and forfeiture of games for failure to comply with provisions of the school district's policy. It is the LPS's expectation that both the district and building-based procedures and guidelines will take into account the health needs and well-being of all students without discrimination or isolation of any student. The LPS recognizes that parents have the primary responsibility for the health of their children. It is parents' responsibility to inform the school district when a child's medical condition might affect the child's welfare or safety. The school district will cooperate with parents and appropriate health professionals. Effective communication is vital between all parties. Background. The traumatic brain injury, TBI, is a serious public health problem in the United States. Each year, traumatic brain injuries contribute to a substantial number of deaths and cases of permanent disability. Recent data shows that, on average, approximately 1.7 million people sustain a traumatic brain injury annually. A TBI is caused by a bump, blow, or jolt to the head or a penetrating head injury that disrupts the normal function of the brain. Not all blows or jolts to the head result in a TBI. The severity of a TBI may range from mild, i.e. a brief change in mental status or consciousness, to severe, i.e. an extended period of unconsciousness or amnesia after the injury. The majority of TBIs that occur each year are concussions or other forms of mild TBI. Purpose and scope. The Lunenburg Public Schools cannot guarantee the safety of student athletes and band members or prevent any harm to students in emergencies. The goal is to work toward minimizing the risk of traumatic brain injury by educating the students, family, coaches, nurses, and community volunteers, and regularly update a system-wide protocol that is compliant with MGL, Chapter 111, Section 222, and 105 CMR 201, in prevention by education and timely response to students with suspected traumatic brain injury. A system-wide effort requires the cooperation of all parties within the system. The goal of the Lunenburg Public Schools is to engage in an effort to prevent traumatic brain injury and second impact syndrome via judicious preparticipation review of records and education and training of all athletes, parents, coaches, nurses, and volunteers, respond appropriately to witnessing suspected traumatic brain injury or receiving medical confirmation of the same, provide appropriate accommodations for the student with TBI during post-concussion recovery according to best practice and medical documentation. There are a list of references, frequently asked questions from the Department of Health, and this was originally approved by the school committee on December 7, 2011.
There is a typo in line one. We use insure instead of insure. We are not insuring anyone. We are not an insurance company. Can we change that from I-N-S, there we go, to E-N? We used it correctly the rest of the time.
Good catch.
Okay. I'm guessing I should go to the top of this list, unless my list is totally different than everybody else's.
You can take anyone that isn't taken. I've written them all down.
Oh, good. Okay. Then I will do security cameras. Fiscal management and non-instructional operations 3000, buildings and grounds 3500, security 3503, security cameras in schools 3503.01. The school committee works to maintain a safe and secure environment for its students, staff, visitors, and facilities. Security means more than having locks and making sure doors are locked at the proper time. Security also means minimizing fire hazards, reducing the possibility of faulty equipment, keeping records and valuables in a safe place, protection against vandalism and burglary, the prosecution of vandals, and developing crisis plans. School facilities and their contents constitute one of the greatest investments of the community. The school committee believes it to be in the best interest of students and taxpayers for the district to exert every reasonable means to protect the investment adequately. In pursuit of this objective, the school committee authorizes the use of security cameras in school district buildings and on its property to ensure the health, welfare, and safety of all students, staff, and visitors, to deter theft, vandalism, and other negative behaviors, excuse me, to safeguard district buildings, grounds, and equipment, and to monitor unauthorized individuals in or on school property. Security cameras may be used in locations as deemed appropriate by the superintendent of schools in consultation with school officials as well as local law enforcement and emergency response agencies. They may be used in any area, inside or outside of school buildings where there is no reasonable expectation of privacy. The district shall notify students and staff through student and employee handbooks and appropriate signage that security cameras have been installed and may be used at any time. Students or staff identified on security cameras in violation of school committee policies will be subject to disciplinary action. The superintendent shall ensure that proper procedures are in place and are followed regarding use, viewing, disclosure, retention, disposal, and security of video recordings or photographs from security cameras in accordance with applicable laws and regulations. The video recording used for security purposes in school district buildings and/or on school property shall be the sole property of the school district. All video recordings will be stored in their original format and secured to avoid tampering and to ensure confidentiality in accordance with applicable laws and regulations. Access to video recordings from security cameras shall be limited to school administrators, superintendent, his or her designee, the school principal, his or her designee. Law enforcement and emergency response officials shall be granted access to video recordings or the security system after giving prior notice to the school superintendent or designee. The recordings contain personally identifiable information under Mass. General Law and will be protected consistent with state and federal law and regulations. The superintendent may, from time to time, issue further guidance that is consistent with current laws and this policy. Source MASC, first reading December 2, 2015. Revised and approved January 6, 2016.
Thank you.
All right, let's see.
No picking short ones.
No, I don't even know which ones these are now.
The smallest kilobytes.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, that's what I should do. Is this fiscal management and non-instructional operations? Have we done this one?
Nope, that's a good one. Take it.
3000, buildings and grounds 3500, security 3503. The purpose of this policy is to ensure the safety and security of students, staff, and visitors. All staff have a duty to adhere to this policy. Doors shall be equipped with locking Grade 1, industry-standard door hardware. During the school day, exterior doors will be kept locked after all students arrive. Doors shall not be opened, shall not be propped open by staff or students. Any staff member finding a door propped open shall immediately close and secure the door. The incident should be reported to the building principal. Any door found to be damaged or not secured properly shall be immediately reported to the building principal. All visitors shall report to the main office. Visitors shall sign in and indicate their destination within the building. All visitors will be issued a visitor's badge, which must be displayed conspicuously. Security means more than having locks and being sure that they are locked at the proper times. Security also means minimizing fire hazards, reducing the probability of faulty equipment, guarding against the chance of electrical shock, keeping records and funds in a safe place. FERPA-protected records shall be located in a secure, locked area. Protection against vandalism and burglary, minimizing slips, falls, falling, and collapsing items. Superintendent of Schools is directed to establish such rules and regulations as may be needed to provide for security in the sense outlined above. Updated and approved 11/19/1. Is that date an error?
Yeah, it must be.
That would be a really old policy. If it was from November 19, the year 1.
Well, we're going to update and approve it. Doesn't really matter.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
True enough.
Thank you. I'm going to read 3501.01. Fiscal management and non-instructional operations 3000, buildings and grounds 3500, buildings and grounds management 3501, environmentally sustainable practices 3501.01. Generally, the school committee recognizes the critical importance of environmental sustainability in today's changing world and is committed to fostering the principles of environmental, economic, and social stewardship through the incorporation of sustainable practices throughout the school department. Purpose. The intent of this policy is to provide a healthful, learning, working environment which contributes to protecting, conserving, and enhancing the nation's environmental resources while providing long-term savings to taxpayers through lower operating costs. Sustainability provisions. The school committee will encourage the following sustainability practices throughout the school department. Require that all school department new construction projects and major modernization renovation projects be designed and constructed to a minimum LEED, Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design, certified or CHPS. Minimize the amount of school department waste sent to the landfill where economically feasible. Heighten awareness about the importance of environmental sustainability throughout the school department through the curriculum and the promotion of environmental programs and initiatives. Continue to promote the use of Green Seal certified cleaning products in conjunction with environmentally sustainable cleaning practices throughout the school division. Encourage the use of innovative energy management practices and develop programs that monitor and regulate energy consumption. Purchase Energy Star rated appliances and electronics when possible. Continue the no idle policy for school buses while encouraging the purchase of fuel-efficient vehicles for all contracted transportation. Continue a building maintenance plan that is committed to addressing indoor environmental problems in a proactive manner. Specify a minimum 30% recycled content paper in lieu of standard office paper for all purchases as long as this is cost-neutral. Incorporate methods to reduce paper consumption and save energy by electronic filing, two-sided copying, web-based conferencing, and the transfer of data via online portals. Promote the use of low-impact fertilizers and integrated pest management IPM. Approved by the school committee, 2/25/15.
All right. Brian, have we done 3506 yet?
No.
On the checklist, all right. Buildings and grounds 3500, visitors to the school buildings 3506. All visitors to the school building during school hours shall first report to the main office. Unauthorized persons in the school building during school hours will be subject to trespass laws. Unauthorized persons who are found in or on school buildings after normal school hours will be subject to the trespass laws. Students who are found in or on school buildings after normal school hours and who are not under supervision will also be subject to trespass laws. Updated 9/23/09.
Thank you.
All right. Which one?
You got 3501 or 3503.02?
I'll take 3501. I picked a short one. Fiscal management and non-instructional operations 3000, buildings and grounds 3500, buildings and grounds management 3501. While the care, custody, and safekeeping of all school real estate is the general responsibility of the town, each building principal shall have general authority over building and surrounding grounds that they supervise. The superintendent shall establish procedures and may be necessary in regard to the condition, upkeep, and general necessary repairs to all school buildings and related surroundings. Does this conflict with the charter and its statement pertaining to superintendency of school buildings and grounds?
I think, I think it's sort of hierarchical, if you will. Like, the school committee would have the superintendency over all of the buildings.
Okay.
But day to day, it really does fall to the principal to sort of be aware of the condition of the facility and grounds and address that promptly.
Okay. I don't have any serious, strenuous objection to this. I think this is...
Thank you.
Fine.
Okay, so, left is 3503.02?
Yes.
All right then. Fiscal management and non-instructional operations 3000, buildings and grounds 3500, security 3503. Key, access card and alarm code 3503.02. Keys, access cards and alarm codes will be issued to school employees for Lunenburg School Facilities on an as-needed basis. These items are issued to individuals directly for their sole use and are not to be transferred to another individual. Keys and access cards shall be returned to the director of facilities when no longer needed or at the request of the superintendent or their designee. Alarm codes are issued by the director of facilities and will be removed from the alarm system when an individual no longer has access to the school facility. Master keys are to be issued by the director of facilities to school administrators and custodial maintenance staff, excuse me, and will be returned to the director when no longer needed. Sign-out logs on keys shall be maintained by all key custodians and shall be checked on by the director. Approved by the school committee, 6/20/18.
Thank you. Is there any other questions, comments, or concerns? All right, I'll look for a motion to approve policies 1408, 5717, 3503, 3506, 3503.02, 3501.01, 3501, and 3503.01.
Still moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Thank you, everyone.
Good work.
Next on the agenda is a discussion FY '26 budget priorities. Dr. Burnham?
So, I just wanted to put on this agenda item to hopefully initiate some conversation amongst the committee. We're going to be digging in soon, very soon.
We're going to be digging in soon, very soon, to the development of the FY26 budget. It would be very helpful if we had some clear direction from the committee as to what the priorities are. And I think, honestly, if there's any area of the budget, programs, et cetera, that are off limits, cannot be cut, that would be helpful to know as well. Because we'll take that into consideration when we're bringing forward a recommendation.
So, one of the things that we talked about at the Budget Task Force, and one of the things that I talked to Evan Waters of FinCom was off taking out the healthcare line from our budget and moving it over to the town because all municipal employees receive healthcare...
Can we save that for the discussion in FY26 budget healthcare?
Sure.
Just to make it easier.
So sorry. I didn't even see that. Okay, yes.
But I agree, we should definitely have that discussion.
Okay.
Very shortly.
Okay.
Any other discussion on the budget priorities? Ms. Arshinbo?
I would just say that with the work that has been done over the last six years or so, as far as in the area of curriculum and instruction and in student achievement, I think that still needs to be a driving force. And I would, as you know I would, not recommend any kind of cut in the area of curriculum instruction.
Thank you. Mr. Scollbridi?
Having an actually apropos comment. I would, in looking at data that Dr. Gilson prepared for the Budget Task Force, I think that we should look to protect hiring BCBAs as a way to stabilize costs. Dr. Gilson's analysis showed that the BCBAs were one of the ways in which our district had abnormally low out-of-district placements compared to other districts. And so, this, I think Carter Tetrazini said, "This is spending a nickel to save a dime." And so, if we can hire more of those people, that would be great. If we could protect the ones we have, I think, given the budget crisis that we're going to be in or are in already, that those kind of measures, especially because they prevent these really big shocks to the system, should be prioritized.
So I'll just offer this comment, that we currently have two. And given the needs of the students that we have in front of us at this very moment, and that can change, we don't believe that we'll need to add to prevent out-of-district placement costs at this point. Right now, the two seem to be working well. But again, student population can change anytime, and the need can change as well.
Don't cut the two, is what I'm saying.
I won't cut the two.
Okay.
Mr. Beadwell?
So I, I'm appreciative that this is on the agenda, and I think it should be on the agenda probably every time we meet, from here on out. That being said, we've yet to get a presentation on our MCAS scores from last year, I believe. We haven't really had a conclusive conversation in terms of our overall approach. Are we looking at this from the position of a needs-based proposal, a level services-based proposal, a 2.5 increase proposal? You know, how are we coming at this, this year? And I understand that these are all things that are somewhat in development now because we have an interim town manager, we have a budget subcommittee, and I appreciate all of the work that's been done there. And I don't want to say anything at this point that would preempt any of that work or those decisions that really need to be made in terms of how we're going to come at this from a, from an initial proposal perspective. That being said, I think that one of the things that I would like to have as part of the analysis is that in the event that we do need to cut things, that there is an impact statement associated with those cuts, as well as any out-of-band costs that a cut might relate to, right? So if we have a statistical analysis that says you cut us, you know, a behavioral counselor, but it leads to an out-of-district placement, like, you know, are there likely costs associated with that? If we were to cut a trainer, as was proposed last year, what are our actual costs in terms of meeting our requirements when it comes to the time it takes to get part-time trainers on sidelines and the costs associated with paying them? You know, those kinds of things, right? So what are the... I think we need a clear understanding of what are the costs associated with the cuts? And, and, I, you know, but I, at this point, I personally have very strong opinions in terms of what my non-negotiables are, but today, I don't think we should leave anything off the table.
Thank you. Ms. Przaski?
So like Peter, I have, you know, gut feelings of, "Don't cut this." But I don't know what the budget is for next year, so I can't say because budget is about balance. And I don't know what it's going to be like next year because some of those non-negotiables, it's all a balance. I will say that we are the same board that we were last year, and you know our priorities from last year and what we went through, and the community made it very clear what was important to them as well. And it's roughly the same community. So I think that's a good starting point. I am nervous about going through it again and, like, cuts being proposed and brought forward and then people being nervous about their jobs. There's no way to get around that, though, because it's a public meeting, that's how we do things. But it's just, it's awful when a budget gets brought forward and says, "We're cutting these positions," and then those people in those positions are scared for their jobs and they don't know. And then the next week, it comes back and we have a different budget where those jobs are saved with somebody else's job. And it's just, it's a very stressful way to run a school system, and it's a very stressful way to treat our employees. So I'm not sure the right way to go about doing that because they're public meetings and that's how schools are run, but it's, but there's no, you know, I can't say, "Don't cut this" because I don't know what the situation's going to be next year, but we did, I think we all made our priorities. We all had things we fought for, were important. But student achievement is important, and I am looking forward to the MCAS presentation and seeing what happened. I have a feeling, based on how the state did and based on what I'm seeing for the school goals, that special education is going to be a focus for us. So that might end up being something budget-wise that we end up having to support more.
Thank you. I would just add, I think it would be important to reach out to the Finance Committee Chair. I know they were discussing even what they wanted to do for their presentations, whether it was what type of budget. So I don't know if, Ms. Arshinbo, I don't want to call you out on the spot, but I don't know if you had any updates on that, if they decided on what type of budget they were looking for at their meetings?
No. That discussion is there.
Still ongoing.
However, whether, but see, they decided at one point that, you know, somebody said a needs-based budget meant one thing to somebody else, and they were, they were lost in semantics.
Yeah.
So I anticipate they spent, it will be in my report, but they spent a great deal of time on a template, and it will be in there, what the final decision is on what they're looking for. But regardless of what they're looking for, I think we need to, we have to provide what they want, but we need to do what we think is prudent.
Exactly. I would, I would agree. I think my, my ideal would be what the school needs, let's have that presented. This is what our ideal budget would be. And then, a second one, once we know that our limitations are X dollars or X percent from the town, this is what would be cut if we don't get, if we have to get to this number. I think that would be important for the citizens to know. And we can obviously make our own decision and vote on whatever budget we want, but I think that's a starting point.
When you say, when you say this was what would be cut, you mean from an ideal?
If our, if our, if our budget for our students comes out to 5% and the town says, "No, we're only giving you 2.5%," I want to know, I want to make sure the citizens know what would get cut if we have to go from, say, the five to the two and a half.
From that ideal budget, okay.
I think that we should be giving some guidance, though, and not necessarily at this meeting, about what we think a needs-based budget is, right? There was quite a bit of controversy a number of years ago when we did a staffing plan, and the superintendent brought forth a, a vision of a five-year staffing plan that was based on her assessment of what we needed to do to get to the point that the school committee envisioned in a five-year period. This was probably more than five years ago now.
Correct. Just for the benefit of the others, that was also developed with input from each of the principals at the time, for their vision for their school, highly functioning to meet all needs.
Right. And, I mean, the fact of the matter is, is that the town had sticker shock, right? I mean, that was, and I'm not, I'm not sure that that got us where we needed to be, other than maybe it was an eye-opener, but it was, it was an emotional event because of the sticker shock associated with it. And I suspect that if the superintendent, all things being equal, were asked to do the exact same thing today, she would take a very similar approach and probably give the town sticker shock. And, and I'm not sure that today, politically, that is the right thing for us to do, right? Like, I think we have to be thoughtful about what are our needs relative to our current level of services, right? Do we need to, do we need, you know, can we afford to pull back here? Do we really need to expand here? Are there opportunities for an increase over here that'll save us money next year and the year after? Like, but, but it can't be, "Well, if we want to be, you know, Lincoln Sudbury next year, this is what it will cost us." Well, we're not going to be able to afford to be Lincoln Sudbury next year, right? So, so I think that we need to be thinking about what lens we want to put on this, because when we say we want a needs-based budget, just like the Finance Committee got wrapped around the axle on it, we could very well as well. And I think we got to bang that around possibly a little bit.
How close are we to that staffing dream plan? Are we anywhere near it, or is it worse than it was?
We, we have added many of the positions that were outlined. And as I've said before, and when Mr. Cassidy was here as our business manager, when we received the grant funding for COVID, it was easy for us because the needs based on COVID impact aligned with things that this district already needed. And we went to our five-year staffing plan and prioritized, based on what we knew we were facing with COVID, which positions we now had funding to bring on board. There are still others out there. We had hoped to add a technology teacher at the high school. We had hoped to be able to expand world language offerings down to the fifth grade. We had hoped to bring on an instructional data specialist, somebody who just manages all of our assessment data and runs reports for principals, for teachers, for leaders, and understands what that data means. It's not just somebody who can run a spreadsheet. They have to understand the educational connection to what they're looking at. So those are some of the, the positions that we, we added. Again, the task for the principals was if you could take a minute to envision a highly functioning school that had offerings and supports to optimally meet the needs of the kiddos in your school, what's on that list? And then, we started working to prioritize, because you can't bring all that on in one year. So if we had to spread it out over five years, and we knew at that time, realistically, that there was no way that that plan could actually be, be realized in a five-year window. And I said that publicly when I presented it. We fully recognize that, and nobody's asking that this be funded within five years, but it identified what the principals, the director of special services, myself, because at that time, we didn't have a curriculum leader, what we thought were the needs of the district to get it to a place where it was really functioning optimally to have a, have a positive impact for, for students and best meet their needs.
Mrs. Scollbridi?
One of the things that happened last year that I think we should seek to avoid is I do not think it was worthwhile or productive, and I think it was, frankly, abusive of your time and your staff's time to have you do a series of budgets with small modifications so that there ended up being like nine or 10 budgets. So one thing that I think might be helpful is if we have a budget that everybody could play with, so that if they wanted to see what it would look like without this, they could just go and do it themselves. Be like, "Here you go. This is our current budget. If you want to figure this out, I'll show you how to do it, but I'm not creating a new budget on the fly." The second thing that I think that we should consider is how we, like Peter said, how we talk about the budgets. And I think that in order to avoid sticker shock, and I don't know what language you used, I don't know how we explain this, but something like, "This is a budget where we keep the character of Lunenburg in consideration, but we have a fully functional school system as modern pedagogical teachings would have it." Then, the second budget would be, "This is our current school system with no cuts, and then this is the budget if we get, you know, the minimum funding from town." And then, that's it. I, I think that not only does making multiple budgets make it more confusing, but it also does not make it clear where our problems are. And you know where our problems are, and Dr. Gilson will know where our problems are, if she doesn't already. And I'm only saying that because some of our problems are not money problems, some of our problems are politics problems. And I think that if we have a simpler, clearer message, and I want to make this perfectly clear, you are not to blame for the complexity in the message. You are the one that was responding to multiple requests that resulted in an unclear message. But I think that, like, somehow, like, branding it or making it simple or saying, like, "This is this budget, this is this budget, and this is this budget." If you would like to change things, here is the, you know, the Excel spreadsheet or whatever, so you can play around with it until your heart's content. And that leads me to my third and final point, which is, by having a budget that allows people to manipulate the data, it will cut off a lot of the complaints that we received during budget cycle last time, which is, people were saying things like, "I want to see the numbers. I want to run these myself. I, I'm an accountant from here. I've done bookkeeping here." And one of the things that makes it very difficult is that municipal finance is just its own specialization. Like, we've talked about, you know, looking at somebody to come in from the outside, and even accountants that do forensic accounting are like, "I don't do that. It's municipal accounting. You have to get a specialized person." And so, if we have that thing that's manipulable and they play around with it, I think that it would, it would give people, it would give people who understand finances enough to play around with it the impression quickly that this is not a business... to play around with it, the impression quickly that this is not a business where the accounting is relatively straightforward, that our accounting is subject to all sorts of compromises and legal provisions that oftentimes are at odds with having a clear and understandable budget. So that, that would be my recommendation of an overall thing without getting into like who and what we protect. I just want to make sure that, number one, your work is not too much. And number two, that our message is very, very clear.
So I'll just offer these comments relative to providing a budget that people can play with and pick and choose what they want to cut. The challenge is, is that every single line, if you, you look at a salary line, we know exactly which teachers are in that line. And the salaries are not all the same. And when we make cuts, we may, as an example, when we made the Wilson teacher cut, we didn't cut the salary attached to that position because that individual had union contract rights to bump. So that salary is not gone. It's moved somewhere else. Additionally, not all of our employees take health insurance. And when, when we were going through the budget and saying, okay, this is the position that's going to go. Okay, this is the individual. Does this individual have bumping rights anywhere else? Yes. Okay, we need to move them here. No. Okay, then this is the salary. Do they also have insurance? Because that comes out of the calculation too.
Yeah, I think what you're asking her to build is an incredibly complicated.
No, no, no. I, this, my point was not clear then. What my proposal is, is to let them have it to play around with. And then when they, when somebody says, oh, look, we can cut this person, then explain to them the bumping rights or the health insurance complexities. Because I think that what people are trying, like what the commenters were trying to get is something that we cannot generate. And so if we have a basic budget that lets them play around, then we can see where their understanding is correct and where their understanding is lacking. And so like, if they come to us and say, you can cut these five positions, it'll be this much. And then we say, oh, no, no, we have to account for bumping rights and this is what happened. Or, no, that works. It's a great idea. I don't, I don't think we should build something that, because we can't, that would, that would encompass bumping rights. I don't think that's possible, or other variables that are interdependent.
I, I actually think that where that criticism came from, and I can think of one particular member of the finance committee who has asked for something like what you're asking for, that the interest wasn't necessarily in troubleshooting individual lines. It was at looking at the trending of all of the lines, right? So what are we spending on fields maintenance from 1920 to 26, right? Like, and, and being able to look at our current and historical data within an Excel spreadsheet that you can then do like trending analysis and really kind of understand, like, why are we spending six times as much on, you know, whatever it is? Paperclips. And I think that, at least from what I heard, the feedback during budget season around the, the lack of a manipu- manipulable, manipulable?
Not bad.
Tool, not bad? A tool to actually, that was the, that was the ask. I don't, I don't, I didn't hear like, well, I'd love to get a tool here so that I know that if we go and cut, you know, art in the elementary school, it's going to save us this much money. Like, I don't, I didn't hear that from anybody.
There was some of that.
Okay.
There was clearly some of that. But I think the people, I see what you're saying because there was some of that as well.
I think the spreadsheets are pretty extensive.
I think it was frustrating because they were looking, and I saw some of the finance committee meetings, they were looking for places to cut, but they kept finding that there was no cuts.
There was no, there was no place to go.
It was very frustrating for me too. It was frustrating for Dr. Burnham too, because there were no cuts to make because we were running on fumes.
One other comment that, you know, I think, and this isn't really subject to your ask of us today, but, but I think that my hope in the, the outcome of the, the special budget committee, I have another name for it in my head and I always want to just spit that out. My, my thinking of it is that I hope that there are some realizations that that committee can come to and state unanimously. Like, there are certain problems that can be solved through compromise and a new way of looking at things. But there are other problems that can only be solved through investment in Lunenburg and investment in our staff. And, and like, that is a realization that is very hard to come to and build political support for if it's just the school guys, or if it's ju- you know. But, but the reality is, is that there are, there are some issues that we're dealing with that are not unique to the schools right now. And, and, you know, my hope is, is that we as a town can, can resolve these issues. What we went through last year was not a solution. It was to fill a gap that was artificially created as a budgeting mechanism by the previous town manager. That is what we went through last year. And, and we need to frame this as we need to get healthy and invest in Lunenburg. And, and I really hope that, that, you know, the budget committee can, can come to some sort of resolution that, that makes that case very clearly for the citizens of Lunenburg.
Thank you. I, I would just add that I would like to see, again, maybe, like some of the other members had said, maybe two or three budgets. As numbers change, we don't make a new budget, new color. It's just, again, this consistent three budgets. This is what the percent is now, and that's it. And again, I'm, I would definitely want to have one of those budgets be whatever the finance committee is looking for, but other than that.
When will you need us to solidify what those two or three budgets should be?
I would say probably no later than the first meeting in December.
Okay, so we'll have a conversation?
Because we'll start working on some different versions and maybe by then we'll also have some indication from the finance committee as to what budgets they're looking for. And maybe, although it might be early, a target budget from the town manager.
Okay. And when will we get our MCAS report?
That's coming at the next meeting.
Okay.
Yep. The district-wide goals, the school improvement plans, and, and a data assessment report. Yep.
And then I think after that we'll...
Any other discussion on the budget priorities?
I, I just want to say that we, at this point in time, we're saying we want to do things this way, but things get very slippery very quickly. And I think it's very important that we keep stating our case. That, that, you know, if, if the town manager comes out with a number that is not going to work for us, we keep at it. Because that's the only way we got anywhere last year. And, and then the parents jumped on board. But I, I think it's important, we never had to before so very clearly say, this is not going to work, you know? And, and I have a strange feeling we're going to be there again.
The communication has to be clear, and, and the, the communication has to be clear to the public so they understand.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. The conversation is helpful. Yep.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the FY '26 budget healthcare discussion. I'll turn it over to Anthony to start us off.
So what happened was we were at the Budget Task Force and Evan Waters, who, I don't know if you, I had never met Evan before, other than at Boy Scouts, his son and my son are both Boy Scouts. He is really, really good. He is really smart. As I told Brian, he can do very complex math, which I'm very impressed by. But he did a, a presentation about a comparison between our town and Maynard, which was, for a whole bunch of reasons, one of the most statistically similar towns. And while he was doing this presentation, which was on a split tax rate, it was on something else, he asked about why the healthcare budget was part of the school budget if healthcare is townwide. And then that got me talking to him about this. And the question was, would it be better to split our, the chunk of our budget out of, the chunk of our budget dedicated to healthcare, out of our budget and place it with the town? Because we have no control, we do not have any involvement in the townwide municipal health insurance pool. And so one of the things that Evan had mentioned was, if we did this, it would allow us to get our budget in earlier, which would allow everybody else, because we're sort of like the 600-pound gorilla in the town budget, to respond in kind quicker. So one of the things that we had noticed in the, in the Budget Task Force was that even if we couldn't increase revenue or save costs, one of the things that we could do that would help the town financially is to provide more stability. And the sooner that the budgets are in, the more stability those budgets will have. And since we have no ability to control the healthcare, it seems weird to have our budget wait for that line. And I think, Carol, you had pointed out at the last meeting, that it, it was always like that until there was a switch over.
The decision was made like 15 years ago too. I, don't quote me on the years ago, but the decision was made because the prior superintendent felt that if the health, at that point, healthcare costs were going down and she wanted to capitalize on the down. But when they go up...
I, I'm just going to say this, like, when I was, the first shock I had of becoming an adult was to figure out how much it costs to do healthcare. Like, I was just stunned. I was like 20, 22 years old and like, this is how much everything costs? So I think that like, the chance that it is ever going to go down until we have like a single payer system is basically zero. So I do not see any risk in moving this back over to the town. You know, like I said, 22, when I was, you know, let's see, it was 24 years ago when I started paying for myself on healthcare, it has never been cheaper. It is not going to be cheaper. So I think moving this over will give our budget more stability and everybody else in town's budget more stability.
There's... Is there a move to move other departments' healthcare to their?
No one else does this except for us.
I know. It's just I, during the budget discussions, there had been some discussions from departments about how moving from part-time to full-time will only cost this much. And there were some misunderstandings about those departments not understanding that when you say it'll only cost this much, okay, but it won't because the healthcare increase was not built into their budget. So they weren't accounting for that increase, unlike us, when we were going part-time to full-time. So, I mean, this is outside our purview as a school committee, but it makes sense to me that all departments carry their health insurance in their line budgets because it's part of the employee compensation.
So just to be clear, Ms. Brzezowski, do you think we should keep the healthcare in the school budget?
I think we should do whatever the rest of the town is doing. But I would encourage the town to move everyone's health insurance to their line items. But that's so volatile that maybe it's not a good idea because the health insurance costs are, they're a huge uncertainty for us. And it makes it very difficult for us to figure out how our budget year is looking. I know last year that was a big reason why we had trouble mailing down what we were going to have to do for cuts.
So Ms. Brzezowski, would you support removing it from our budget?
I would support moving it if that's what the rest of the town is doing, with the knowledge that maybe it ends up coming back to us.
Thank you. Mr. Beardmore?
Has anybody done sort of a, what are the tertiary, you know, second and third degree effects of doing something like this? So what, what I have in mind here is that the town, for better or worse, has a lot of part-time, non-benefited employees. And the reason why that is, is because, well, we have certain offices in town that are not open 40 hours a week. But we also have done this partly as a budgeting exercise, right? Like, to not have the full-time employee means that you're saving $24,000 a year in health insurance costs associated with that headcount. And so if you just take this bundle of money and stick it in the town, and then we start going and making arbitrary decisions, not arbitrary, but decisions that are not related to the healthcare costs associated with the number of full-time or part-time employees that we're carrying, that number is going to expand or contract based on the number of full-time employees that we're carrying. Now, if I'm the, the, the Eagle House, whatever it's called now, the adult...
Adult activities.
Right. And they want, they want to expand from a part-time cook to a full-time cook, which was one of their things last year. And the town says, yeah, but if we do that, it's not just the, you know, the additional hours per week. There's an additional $24,000 balloon payment here for benefits. You can't do that. Well, yeah, but the school can do it. Why can't we? Right? Like, I, I think that there are potential downstream town budget ramifications to this type of decision where the departments are not responsible for the total compensation of their employees that can cause shifting of responsibility to a magic fund that, yeah, that's all great, and the town pays for the, for the health insurance, but there's left, money left over for you to actually program your stuff.
We don't really hire like that.
The one thing that I would point out is, even if that's true, it doesn't matter because the reverse is also true. So for example, your concern is, let me make sure I understand. Your concern is that if we don't have, as part of our budget, the healthcare costs, then we, we could hire somebody and not realize how much it's costing the town.
More importantly, the, the level of scrutiny, because if we're not putting that scrutiny on ourselves, then there is absolutely no justification for the Eagle House or the police department or the library to put that exact same scrutiny on their decision to expand their services either.
Right. But the problem with that is, even if we include that scrutiny, it doesn't matter because we can't control or predict what the increase will be, right? So let's say that we say, we're going to push this back to the town.
My argument, Tony, if you take the increase out of it completely, the increase or decrease has nothing to do with it. It is the total cost based on the number of full-time employees.
Oh, I agree.
Full-time employees, adding a chunk of healthcare.
And I just think that just by sticking this into a single fund and not having a single throat to choke when it comes to the budget on that particular line, it's just a balloon thing that, nope, the town manager doesn't control, the superintendent doesn't control, it's just a thing, it's a blob out there in the budget, that that is something that individual boards can say, okay, well, now's the time for me to expand my 15 hours a week position to 32 because nobody's going to care about the additional, about the additional benefits associated with this.
We can't do anything.
So I would add to it. So I was watching a lot of the finance committee meetings in the spring, and there was a lot of scrutiny on any of the departments that were adding an employee. And the, the conversations really led to, the full-time employee is going to add this much more to the, the health insurance.
Do we get that same level of scrutiny?
And we don't, we don't get that scrutiny because we're in control of our staffing and we pay for our healthcare.
If we add a full-time employee, we're taking down that $24,000 or whatever it is, and we have to budget for it. We're responsible for it within our envelope.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Ms. Brzezowski.
Does it, do the DESI calculations for per pupil spending factor in health insurance?
Yes.
If we move it to the town side, does that, it still factors in? I just wanted to make sure.
As does a percentage of Ezekiel's time and stuff like that.
I know. I just wanted to, I wanted to be absolutely sure that we weren't going to...
Anyway, I, I have, I, I understand the intent here. I truly do. But I think that there are potential unforeseen consequences here that could really bite us long-term. And I think we just have to think this through fully with the, with the participa- participation of the other department heads and the finance committee.
Does anybody know who was around when the old system was in place?
Like, as in who? What do you mean?
Who was involved either in town government as a paid employee or a volunteer on a board that would know what it was like?
Yeah, there are people around town who were on the school committee at the time.
There are people that were here.
Yeah, I, I think it's whether the, the town has it in their budget or not. Yeah. And I think it's whether the, the town has it in their budget or not, it's, it's, yeah. It is what it is. We just have to decide if we wanna pursue...
She knows everything.
...changing the healthcare back to the town. Again, the way I look at it is, it's, it's a, it's a big number that could really drastically affect our budget. So, I think it's taking away from the children.
It affects it either way, though, because it's gonna come out of our budget.
Well, yeah, of course.
And not knowing the health insurance numbers still delays knowing what we're getting it from the town manager for an increase. It doesn't, it, it doesn't change, it doesn't change that much. We're, I mean, we're still waiting to find out about the healthcare increase, but the town is also still waiting to find out about the healthcare increase in the calendar.
Well, so then maybe the town manager is coming back, instead of a two-and-a-half annually, maybe they're coming with the two or a 1.5.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So, I'm not...
I would much prefer, like, one of the benefits of your proposal is that at least you get an apples-to-apples when it comes to the increases on a, on a department, a department, right?
Yeah, I like that.
And I think, you know, in my mind, that's a huge benefit.
Also, of course.
But one of the ways that you can achieve that is to do what Laura suggested, which is you build in the line for the Police Department, and the Library, and the DPW, of what their actual, uh, health insurance costs are. And you, you burden it by department, and then you have an apples-to-apples comparison.
Department spending is actually equal.
Maybe that's the avenue that we encourage other departments to put it in their budget.
Because when you look at the school department...
For the Finance Committee.
When you look at the school department budget compared to the rest of the town budget, it's, our health insurance is rolled into our line item, and if it's sat outside of there...
I mean, the, the argument was actually made last year in a Finance Committee meeting, when I made the comparison of the town manager's proposed budget increases between departments, the argument was made, it's not an apples-to-apples, because you guys include health insurance and they don't. And my answer was, yeah, but the health insurance number isn't even finalized, and it could be a bigger number. And it, you know, so, we, we, like, we actually had this argument last year. There's no reason why we should not have an apples-to-apples comparison. We absolutely should somehow.
That's out of our purview, though. The school committee doesn't get to dictate finance policy.
Well, again, we could recommend that all the other departments follow in our suit of putting healthcare...
It turns out, the financial policy is under review right now, so we, we could make a recommendation.
I, I would love, I mean...
I mean, one of, one of the things that I think is that when, it's, it's really like a perception thing, and then like a fact thing. When we get a 2%, 2.5% budget increase, and we are including in the healthcare in our budget, it means that functionally what we're getting is different than what everybody else is getting. Like, it's the same, so it's just unfair. But the, the other problem is, when people say, schools are, are too expensive, they cost too much money, like, compared to, you know, the Fire Department or the Police Department, it, it, it's hard to tell them, like, well, the reason why, not only are we bigger than these other departments, but on a per-person basis, the, the school's budget for that individual is higher because we include healthcare. If we sloughed off the healthcare, you would see that, like, actually, teachers or paras or custodians aren't making that much more. But, if they look at it just in terms of, like, what is the district paying for its employees? Because we include healthcare, it makes it look like our employees are like driving around in Cadillacs, when they're not. And I, I feel like that makes it hard, from a messaging standpoint, to express how, how dire the circumstances are for the pay that our employees are getting.
But have it...
And we have a lot more personnel.
Having access to the health insurance information, and having that in our budget makes it easier for us to control the cost, to understand the cost, when...
Oh, I, I don't, I don't dispute it. I think that we're just getting penalized for being overly cautious in how we do our accounting.
Which is what I said. I, I wish the rest of the town departments would carry their own health insurance. I, I would, I would like to do whatever the rest of the town does, and I would like the rest of the town to do what we would.
Another question could potentially be, and I'm just speculating here, but one of, you know, so if we were to go to breaking it out, department by department, and those ta, and those departments are ultimately managing their budgets over the course of the year, and realizing that they're underspending in health insurance, that could have a detrimental effect on our free cash. Like, you know what I mean?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. That's definitely true.
Like, you have to think through all of the down, because, because we tend to underspend that line.
That is definitely true.
So, like, I mean, there are, there are things that you gotta think through, that, that I'm not sure we, we, perhaps they've been discussed, I haven't...
I think I'd prefer not to change it right now.
Yeah, I think, I think we definitely would need a future discussion on that. So, another avenue to the, the healthcare is, uh, the healthcare plans. So, the school committee cannot, for the public, the school committee cannot negotiate, uh, with the LEA on health insurance. Um, the town does, with all of the unions, and, and the LEA is one of the, the largest unions, so they do have a, a big vote in the matter. But they do have a committee of all the unions together, um, where they meet and discuss, um, proposals. So, uh, hearing from the Finance Committee, uh, during their meetings in the spring, they had talked about, uh, whether the town offered a high deductible healthcare plan. They did not. Uh, the Finance Committee was surprised, uh, but did, did nothing in, uh, for the matter. Uh, I took it on myself to create a proposal, uh, for a high deductible health, healthcare plan, uh, that would have a health savings account, and make this as an option. So, it'd be an additional option to the current healthcare plans that are offered, so that, um, union members and, and employees could elect to take on this other healthcare plan, this high deductible healthcare plan option, uh, through the same healthcare provider, but it would be just a, a different option to pay for their healthcare. So, you have that in your folders. Um, basically, it would involve lower premiums. So, because the, the town pays a portion of the premiums, the town would save money, but also the employee would save money because there were lower premiums. Um...
This is an option. This wouldn't be...
This would not be a complete...
This would be something people can be opted to.
Yeah, this would not be a swap of the healthcare plans. Uh, the employees could still opt for their current healthcare plan.
Just wanted to stay with that.
But if they, exactly. But if they wanted to choose, uh, a plan that had a lower premium, uh, both the district and the employee could save money on it. Again, it is a high deductible healthcare plan, so they would be paying out-of-pocket expenses, um, for, for most things.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Beardmore.
So, I don't think this should require a long conversation. The benefit is, is there's a potential savings to us. It gives our employees more options and more tools to manage their finances. And it's 2024, and most organizations have these options now in the private sector. So, I can't see why we wouldn't endorse doing this.
I, I liked, I mean, I, when I saw this in the folder earlier today, I was like, ooh, this is a good idea. Um, I mean, like, the, the thing is, like, this is what young people, financially speaking, this is what young people should be doing, so that they could save that money and then switch over later. So, if, I don't see any downside. Like, I think this is a really creative idea.
Where does the upfront, um, contribution come from out of the town budget?
So, it actually comes from the savings. The, the savings by having them enroll...
Okay. I like that answer.
In the program.
Okay.
The town will save more than what they're actually giving away.
More than the contribution.
Okay.
Contribution.
That was my, that was my one question, was, does this come out of our budget?
The employee could lose money potentially, if again, they have a lot of expenses throughout that year.
Yeah.
There is a maximum, um, that they could spend throughout the year. But that would be the...
How long is the commitment to it?
So, typically, they're one year, one year, you switch over your healthcare plan.
Okay. See, you can have one really bad year, and then be like, no, I'm going back to my...
You could decide to go back to your previous...
You can decide to go back.
Okay. Does this need approval?
So, I have, I sent it to the Select Board Chair, the Finance Committee Chair, the school commi, uh, the Superintendent, and the interim town manager.
Oh, so this is for everybody?
The Finance Committee Chair invited me to his meeting, to their meeting, to present it, discuss it. We discussed it. They, they all seemed to like it, the committee. Uh, the next steps was to send it along to the, the interim town manager and the Select Board Chair, to get it to this separate committee where they actually vote, decide, the unions can decide. And I have not gotten anything past the Select Board and interim town manager at this point. So, it's kind of been there.
Do you mind if, if we bring this up at the, because the, the next two meetings of the Budget Task Force are cost reductions and expense, or, uh, revenue increases. This is a really meaningful change.
I think it would be a great idea for that committee, and I think we keep pushing the Select Board and interim town manager to try to push this along.
Thank you for putting the work into this.
By the way, I don't, I actually don't think that we're gonna save a lot of money by doing this, but I think that we should do it anyway. Like, e, even if it's a little bit of money...
Find it.
Yeah. So, I think it's... This is, this is to everybody's benefit to offer this, and it's gonna cost us nothing to do it.
Yeah, exactly. I, I, I think it's a, it's progressive. So, as people learn more about it, and we educate the, the town, and the district educates, more people could enroll, and it's a slow growth. But it is not millions of dollars that we're gonna be saving. But it's, I think ideas like this, that we constantly look for ways to find savings for the district and the town.
Take care of the pennies, and the nickels and dimes will take care of themselves.
Thank you, Brian.
Yeah.
Do you vote to support it, or?
No, it's just a discussion.
Just talk about it.
It's just a discussion at this point.
Okay.
If we need that, we can talk about that in the future. Uh, next item in the agenda is a discussion on school committee goals. So, I drafted the school committee goals. They've been in the folder for the last two meetings. I wasn't in the past, here at the past meeting. Um, based off of the discussions that we had prior to that, I drafted four goals based off of all the feedback. I sent them to the Superintendent to put in the folder, also with my feedback, was that the first three, I think, were potential. I think the fourth one fit more with potential superintendent goals, not school committee goals.
I think that's what I said.
And I did get feedback from Ms. Archiboe, similar to that.
Yes.
Yeah.
If she wants to talk about her feedback, we could do that, too.
I'll, I'll go through my feedback after.
But I think we're, we're getting close. Ms. Archiboe?
Okay. Um, I took a look at these goals, and as always, Brian does a wonderful job with the wordsmithing. Um, way better than I do, when I being the English person and he being the math guy. But, um, anyways, I, I went through and I looked at them, and I found that there were many places where I felt, um, we were overstepping our charge, because we had to stay out of day-to-day operations. So, and I did have some questions on them. So, I don't know, do you want me to just go through?
Yeah, I can go through and, and edit and revise. It sounds like...
All right.
We're, uh, we're live with a editor.
Oh, well, that's good, because don't ask me to do that either. Um, so, ensure the long-term financial stability of the district, balancing the budget. I, I think that, that objective is fine. Under it, though, work collaboratively with the staffs and the unions, that's not us. So, I put in, work collaboratively with the superintendent, parents, and community members, um, as well as town partners. I mean, I just changed that list, because, um, you know, it's not to us to do that. That was jumping over.
Can we make those revisions?
Well, that's, I mean...
For a discussion.
For discussion on that.
Yeah.
I mean, we have members that are part of subcommittees that are negotiating with unions.
This is true.
We do work with the unions. In fact, our collective bargaining is in our...
We work with the unions to collective bargain, but the collective bargaining, to me, is different than developing a budget. That's a different task.
I think it involves a fiscally responsible budget.
They're related, yeah.
I mean, I, I think those are absolutely related. I, I...
Then, I would be okay with it if we put unions through collective bargaining.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not like that.
I'm okay with that.
But I do agree with the essence of it.
And I agree with your general concern. That's a good catch.
Um, and that, that side of it is, that's our job. The side that you've outlined, that is our job.
The negotiating is, yes, definitely.
Well, and the, the Finance Committee, the town manager, the select...
Right, right, absolutely.
That part is our job.
That part is definitely our job, and the Budget Task Force, um, and trying to get competitive salaries. Once again, that's our, our union negotiation, and any other way we can do it, whether it's through, um, the Budget Committee, or whatever it is. The benchmarks, passage of a budget, obviously, is a major benchmark. It was a major one last year, and it wasn't even a goal. Um, but, regular updates and reports on the district's financial status, and progress during improve, toward improving efficiency and cost-effectiveness. I, I was looking for a clarity on that, because what were we looking for as a benchmark to do that? To improve cost-effectiveness? Because, like, wouldn't that need percentages or something?
Well, I think that...
I mean...
I would rather progress towards the superintendent's goals, when it is, goals and student achievement.
But that, that's...
This is a budget line.
It's a budget.
The budget is...
It's a budget line.
How the budget serves, though.
I mean, the current reality that we're operating in with the Budget Committee, and the, the, the comments that have been made over the course of the last year around ideas such as consolidating services and those kinds of things, right? Like, I, I think we all have different opinions in terms of what services could potentially be consolidated or not. I have very strong opinions, as do you, Carol.
Yep.
Um, but I think that we have an obligation to consider those things, and to engage in a dialogue about them, and to defend our positions when we think they're a bad idea. And I, I think that, you know, those are, those are the kinds of things that it's hard to put a benchmark on and say, we're gonna save $100,000. But you can say, we are gonna engage in a dialogue, we are gonna work collaborati, with these, collaborative with these other committees, to at least have conversations about where and when these opportunities may exist. And if they don't go, they don't go. But, but I, I think...
I see your, your point.
A, a stated goal that we are going, we are going to engage here, um, to the, to the best of our ability, and as far as we can go within the, as we see our roles, I think we should, we should do that.
So, I would agree. Does the benchmark, is that clear, though? Does that connect to what Peter's...
See, that, that's, that's the problem, is that I...
Achievable.
Achievable and measurable, because it has to be achievable, achievable, and measurable.
Regular updates is achievable. Regular updates and reports...
Regular updates, obviously, are achievable, and...
Regular updates and reports on the budget, so like monthly budget check-ins.
Or something, yeah.
And regular budget discussions.
Meetings or collaborations to improve efficiency and cost-effectiveness? Or...
I think at least monthly budget discussions, which we have been doing so far.
Yeah, well, see, that, that part...
It's been positive.
It's, it's more that last part of that benchmark that I was having trouble with.
And I think that the progress toward improving efficiency and cost-effectiveness, I think that should not be our only goal. I do think that we're not running a business. We are not here just to be efficient and cost-effective. We're here to, we're here for student achievement.
Do we wanna split it up into two benchmarks, like, go from two benchmarks to three, and where it says progress toward improving efficiency and cost-effectiveness, maybe that's its own...
Yeah, but how do you measure progress, is the question.
Well, that's what I'm thinking. You gotta get rid of progress, but maybe it's meetings, or collaboration with other departments.
You could say, you could say, um, collaborative discussions are held towards efficiency and cost, cost-effectiveness across town departments or something.
I like that.
That's perfect.
Something more like that.
At the end of the year, you can say, yeah, we met three times, and we talked about these things.
We met with them, and we decided this isn't gonna work, and so, never mind, or...
The term town manager, the...
Or, we found, so if we do something like that...
Yeah. Did you catch that? Can you repeat it for Dr. Brenner?
Oh, yes.
He's thinking about someone.
Okay. Um, something like, um, discussions...
Collaborations, I think, sort of.
Collaborative discussions between town committees, because we would be committees, not departments. We would work with the FinCom, or, or Select Board.
Maybe DPD.
But that's not, really not us, I don't think. I don't know, it could be, I suppose. But, I, I would, I would say collaborative meetings with town committees.
And boards.
So, what do you wanna say after that? Um...
To improve efficiency and cost-effectiveness?
Yeah.
Or explore?
To explore. There you go. To explore efficiency and cost-effectiveness. That would be all right.
So, that'll be like a third bullet?
Yeah, I think so. Because it didn't make sense with the other one, to me. That's just me.
Any of the discussion on the first goal?
So, one area that, I don't know if belongs in this goal, or maybe under communication, or maybe we don't put it as a goal and do it separately. Um, but there was an issue brought up last year, um, around fees. And there was an ask that we take a look at... And there was an ask that we take a look at, um, in particular, the student activity fee in the high school was specifically mentioned. Um, and, and I don't know if it belongs under this goal, but it's a financial thing.
I think it does.
Oh, yeah.
We probably need to resolve that this year.
I, I.
Because it will affect the budget if we don't do it.
Yep, we were told we can't tackle it.
And we, we need to decide if we are going to keep it, if we have the legal authority to do it. Like, those are things that, that I think we need to get our arms around this year and it does relate to the financial stuff.
So, we could, because we were also, weren't we talking about, um, facility fees as well? Did we have that discussion or did I dream that? I think we did. Um, so maybe an action step, um, it, it's, um, review and/or revise fees, or, I don't know all, but.
Facilities and activity fees.
Facilities and, yeah.
Facilities, activities and sports.
And that needs to happen before the budget discussions.
Yeah, I mean.
I would do all three. I mean, they're fees, we're looking at fees, so.
We need to talk about them, it's been a while.
Yeah. There, there are some that are higher priorities than others. You know what I mean?
Oh, I agree, but it, it, in talking about budget and balancing budget, I think fees are on the table because like.
They're getting all fees, yeah.
Yeah.
Let's do it.
So, we might as well put it in.
But would that go under Goal One or Goal Two?
That would go under Goal One.
Because it's budget.
Goal One, because it's financial, definitely.
Goal One, action step, additional action step.
Yeah, because we started to talk about it last year and then we had to.
Well, we just couldn't deal with it.
Stop. Well, we had to stop because it was related directly to the budget.
Any other discussion on Goal One?
Okay.
Nope, Goal One is great.
Let's look at Goal Two.
Good job.
Goal Two, I changed a word in mine and you can agree or not agree. Um, I put instead of, oh, I added a word, is what I ended up doing. I didn't print mine in color, so now I'm confused. Um, develop a comprehensive capital plan that focuses on the current maintenance. Um, I just felt that made more sense.
Hmm. So, the problem here is, is that we have very specific language in town fiscal policy and the charter around capital planning.
Right.
And this is, this is actually, um, more broad than how we have traditionally approached capital planning in the, the sense of like a capital planning request. So.
So, I think this is, this is where I'm torn, is, is this overreaching and getting it to the weeds?
This is what I'm wondering, that's why I went with capital.
Or is this budget, or, yeah, if you go to capital plan, then it makes sense.
Then we're fine, it's definitely ours.
Or if you go to budget plan, comprehensive budget plan that focuses.
No, but these are, I mean, these are huge issues that we, that we are, that are not going to get resolved unless we provide leadership. That, that's just the bottom line. And, and all, all of these areas, um, I, I think are needed. Now, they are not, we're going to need this in the capital plan in three years from now, necessarily. It could be, hey, you know what? We should be spending, on average, $65,000 a year more on the maintenance of the primary school, just to keep up with, you know, like, it, so.
As a potential revision, how about developing a comprehensive plan involving the capital plan, budgeting and maybe long-term borrowing? Something that connects to what we're.
Well, I mean, so the, the problem here is, is that the first two items, and these are all related, but they're, but the way you would pursue them is a little bit different, right?
That's why I want to kind of say, it's like capital plan and long-term borrowing.
Like, I mean, the first bullet around Turkey Hill and the turf field is probably related to some kind of borrowing.
Yeah.
The second one around, um, you know, updates to plan projects, that, that's really like making sure that we're on the level and working with our counterparts when it comes to capital planning and delivering on the appropriations that, that are made. Um, and then the third one could very well be relating to the capital plan, but it could also have to do with a long-term maintenance plan or.
It could be budgeting, annual budget, too.
You know, right, so.
But I want to connect it to the budgeting, the capital planning.
Yeah, it has to be connected.
I want to connect it to our.
Thing that is our.
Our responsibilities.
If you look at, if you look at the town charter, we only have three powers, right? Number one, appoint superintendent. And then, number two, make all reasonable rules and regulations to management of public, public school. Number three, to adopt and administer annual operating budget for the school. I'm concerned that if we say something more specific than adopt and administer a plan for capital improvement, that it's not something that we can do, right? Like, some of the stuff that we have, that we want to do, is really not what we do, right? Like, that's the Capital Planning Committee.
Don't do it.
If we don't do it, nobody else does.
No one's going to.
I, I know, but like, can we make a goal for us to do something that we are not empowered by law to do?
Yes.
We have, we have superintendents here over the ground.
Because there, there's, there's, there's no, we're not, first of all, some of these things can lead to policy.
Sure.
Right? Like, the third bullet in particular could very well lead to policy. We're going to sweep the floors every day, whether they need it or not, right? That, that's a potential outcome of the third bullet. The, the, the first and second very much potentially relate to budgetary items.
Okay.
Um, but you have to do the work to get to the point that you can revise the policy or pass the budget or ask for funding for something. This is the work.
So, I like Goal Two. I've been asking for something like, I want a long-term maintenance plan where we inventory what we have and what we're going to need and we start talking about things like the primary school is 20 years old, how much longer until the roof needs serious work and, um, start anticipating needs far ahead of time. However, that requires a facilities director.
That's what I was going to say.
And this is very difficult to do. This goal also says special attention given Turkey Hill, um.
Well, we're on the path there.
I think that first one is.
Trust me, as soon as the study comes in, I want to have the discussion.
Well, I think that's literally what we're doing this year.
Yeah, like, so.
It's like, make a goal of what you're actually doing is.
It's the way you should do it.
So.
That first one.
But this, this is hard to do without a facilities manager.
No, it's going to get done. Like, the Turkey Hill, it's going to get done.
Oh, no, no, we.
No, I mean, I mean, a long term.
You saying the next two?
A long-term facilities plan, a long-term maintenance plan, uh, things like protecting the envelope of our buildings, even the high school, we, we need to know what's.
Hey, you know what?
The high school's 10 years old.
I, I think it's unfortunate that we've had some churn in that role and that we're going to have more churn, but we are responsible for our buildings.
Yeah, so.
And I am okay with setting a goal and doing everything within our power to achieve that goal and failing than not setting the goal because we think we're, it's going to be hard because we're going to have to hire a new facilities director.
Yeah, yes, that is what I'm saying, because it's hard because we, but it, it does need to get done. I've been pushing this for a while and.
Carol?
Waiting for.
I just, I hesitate to set something that I don't see the manpower to do it. Develop a comprehensive plan that focuses on current maintenance as well as future needs of school buildings and athletic fields. That, that general objective, I'm fine with. I'm, I'm fine, oh, I did scratch out something, but anyways. Um, oh, I, I scratched, scratched out the word current and I'll tell you why. Because to me, current maintenance would mean, and perhaps I read maintenance differently, would mean day-to-day operations and that's not ours. That's why I got rid of the word current. Now, if you mean by current maintenance, walking around and saying, um, this widget is ready to break and we need to replace it, if that's what you mean by current maintenance, then I can go more with that, but current maintenance, the high school wasn't being cleaned well and the superintendent switched people around to make the cleaning better at the high school, that's day-to-day operations, that's theirs. That's not ours.
I disagree. I disagree and let me tell you why. Part of our maintenance problem, and, and I appreciate the work that the superintendent did and the creative thinking that the, the leadership team put together in addressing this, we also have a budget issue associated with custodians.
Well, yeah, that's in the first, yeah.
And our ability to pay people and our ability to, to address the day-to-day maintenance of our building. And those could be dealt with potentially in both policy and budget. So, while I, I, this, this, what this is not saying is we get involved in the day-to-day maintenance, but it is saying that we have the ultimate responsibility and authority when it comes to our superintendency of our facilities. And, and I think it's entirely within our purview to say, are the floors getting swept? And if they're not, is there something that we can do from a policy or budget standpoint to make sure that the floors are getting swept? If the superintendent says, nope, I got a better way to do it, don't worry about it, so be it. Like, that's fine, right? But, but that does not absolve us of our responsibility.
I, I, I think the, um, the salary issue is addressed in the first goal.
I would agree. I wonder, too, so, I'm okay with getting rid of the word current, that's not an issue for me, if everybody's okay with that. But I would say almost at the end of the objective, maybe it's after sustainability through capital planning, budgeting, policy.
Mm-hmm.
Development. Do you want to click, click it back to our duties?
And to flip it back to us.
So, capital planning, budget, policy and potential large project proposals.
Will that be long-term?
If we need to bring forth a proposal or submit a letter of interest to the MSBA this year, we need to do that.
We need to do that.
If we need to bring forth an article to town meeting that says we need to borrow $2 million to deal with the turf, we need to do that.
That's what I was looking for the word, so long-term borrowing.
Or if we need to make some kind of financial or facility plan to get everybody out of TCPASios, we need to be able to do that.
But it's not, but it's not just the, it's not just the financial instruments, Brian. It's the, it's the plan, right?
The plan.
It's the, it's the proposal that we need to ensure is brought forth and approved.
It's the plan and the push, the political will, it's us.
So, can you, can you make a recommendation for the objective to add on to the end?
So, I think, I think you can say, um, so you wanted to add something to the end, like, via.
Budgeting.
Via budgeting, capital planning, policy or potential long-term projects that may involve borrowing or something like that.
I, I am looking at this goal and thinking that that is, like, huge.
I, I recognize the fact that.
I mean, like, well, this is not all going to get done. We can't have people running around.
I'm looking at.
Well, progress, progress.
Progress towards.
I think we're trying to make progress, progress towards.
Progress towards, I'm okay with, but this is going to really strain people.
I think, look, Carol, how many times have you said, sooner or later, we're going to pick up the ball if you guys keep kicking, you know what I mean?
I don't.
Are we going to do it or not? The time has come and.
She's waiting, because she's.
And are we gonna, I mean, we need, we need to, like I said, I, I'm okay with setting a difficult goal and saying I failed if I, if I did everything within my power to move to that goal. And, and saying that we made progress, right? Like, I'm okay with that, but, but in the absence of that, that basically means we're not going to do it and we're seeding it now. And I, I don't think we should do that.
Based off of the discussion tonight, do we want to change the action step, the first bullet, to add in addition to the school administration offices?
Yes.
Yes.
So, with special attention given to school administration offices, Turkey Hill School and Turf Field.
I would almost be more comfortable, and I know you would disagree with me, but I'm going to say it anyways, um, develop a long-term facilities plan that addresses Turkey Hill District Offices and the Turf Field. I think that's a lot for one year.
Yeah, I think we could delete the district needs.
I think, start making progress.
I think if we, if we try, when, if we focus just on the district office, which we had already talked about, and Turkey Hill, which we're in the middle of.
Yep, and the Turf Field, which we're in the middle of.
And the Turf Field that we're in the middle of, then I'm perfectly okey-dokey about that.
You know what? I would be, I mean, that, that's the hard stuff here, right? The other stuff we could potentially do just by osmosis.
Could be done, could be done if, if time allowed, if, if we had a real crackerjack facilities person that was just like dreaming it all night and doing it all day or something.
Yeah, it's going to be tough.
But I, I think if we just focused on those three things, I would.
Can each?
I, I would rather do that.
I'd be okay with that.
I'd rather do that.
Can TCP, Turkey Hill and the Turf Field be each their own benchmark, though? So, we don't just fail?
I mean, throw them in, we'll.
I am.
I think we're going to make progress on all of them.
We'll make progress on all three of those things in one way or another.
I'm very nervous about Dr. Burnham and Dr. Gilson's time.
Me, too, that's what I'm saying.
Well, there's, there's a, like, there's a timeline on the Turkey Hill School, like, that's already there.
And that's, Dr. Gilson's taken that on, but that's not, I mean, she.
It's not not going to get done, is the idea. There's a timeline, they have to get that.
She's here at 9:30 at night and she met after school until 5:30 and then came here at 6:30.
Laura, none of these things are optional.
Yeah, I know.
We have to solve all three of them.
Those three things, we have to, we have to take care of.
We have to solve.
We have to make good progress on all three of those things this year.
Is there any other discussion on Goal Two?
I'm, I'm fine with consolidating to that bullet.
All right, let's look at Goal Three.
Okay.
That's ended.
Transparent and effective communication.
I appreciate that this is on here and I like that we make it a goal. I think we've been doing good at it.
My question on this, um, is, at the objective, my question is, is this all about the misinformation floating around on Facebook? Is that what this is about?
Pretty much.
I think, I think it's a constant, it's always something.
Is that what this is? There's always something new popping up that's wrong.
There's always a struggle.
We're never going to fix that, that's.
No, I know, but that's why I'm asking this question.
Well, well.
The actively counter, I don't know.
It, I would say, Carol, my, my honest assessment would be 90%.
Okay.
But there are other things that this could potentially address that, without unnecessarily airing public grievances.
Right, right, right. No, that's fine.
There is information and misinform, there, there is frequently misinformation floating around that is grounded in truth, that, that truth has never been established publicly and therefore the misinformation follows, right?
Okay.
And, and part of that is making sure the school committee is informed with accurate information and, and.
And that the school committee states it.
And we state it, or when asked individually, you can say, this is what I know, right?
Right.
But when we don't know, we don't know, right? Like, and, and, and I, I think so that, and, and I could cite you two examples that I won't publicly today, within the last two weeks, that had nothing to do with Facebook.
Okay.
So, one of the things that I, I have a hard time with about actively counter misinformation, number one, I do nothing on social media. So, like, I have no idea. Like, when people tell me at the school committee meeting that there was this uproar about, you know.
Whatever.
An applicant or whatever, I have no idea.
That sucks.
Yeah, so like, I, I don't know how, like, am I, personally, I will just say this, I will not go on Facebook. So, if I have to go on Facebook to figure out what information we need to counteract, So if I have to go on Facebook to figure out what information we need to counteract, I hereby resign. Because Facebook is a cesspool and a waste of time.
So I don't think that...
I don't think you have to.
I'm not doing that.
I don't think that this insinuates that we're going to assign you to go on Facebook, but I think...
That'd be really bad.
But I think what this is saying is that we have a gap that we need to address. And I'm not, I don't think that this, I don't think that this projects a solution. I think it says we need to address the gap.
That gets me to my second point. Sometimes I think that, like, talking about and giving credence to these things actually does more harm than good. Because like, in a recent controversy, reviewing all the information, even in a light most favorable to the dissenters, the stuff that was on Facebook that I found was like utter trash. It was garbage. It was like worse than gossip. And so like, if we're going to go about dispelling misinformation, you know, this, I'm worried that we're going to in some ways bolster the wrong information. You know, like, when my eldest son was taught about slavery, they had to like explain why they had this system, and he was like, I thought that the teacher was for slavery. And I was like, no, 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 no. They're telling you the garbage that idiots in the 19th century in the South said as, you know, justification for racist, inhumane behavior. It was not what they really believed. And I'm fearful that if we, again, if we get into the countering misinformation battle, it will eventually, it will inevitably become political, and we will also magnify the voices of idiocy. Like, I'm not, I don't think that we need to do that.
Again, I think you are projecting a potential solution or an agreement that we would come to as a result of this. I don't, I don't think that we should prejudice ourselves on the outcome. I think that there are gaps that have been problematic for us. You've cited an example from this past summer.
Yes.
That was an extreme example, right?
Unbelievable.
Let me give you an example from the last week that is not as extreme, but I view as a gap.
All right.
Word was out two days ago that our facilities director had resigned.
Yeah.
Why did he resign? Where is he going? What is he doing? What's going on in the central office? These are questions that were circulating over the course of the last two days before it was announced to school committee on Wednesday night.
But we can't make meaningful comments on those things because their employment matters.
Well, we have gotten updates from the superintendent previously in the form of email saying so-and-so has resigned and they're on their way. But in the absence of information, there's nothing there. It's a gap and people speculate and lead to conclusions that are incorrect. And it's not nearly as extreme. It's really minor, you know, in the grand scheme of things, but I'm bringing it up and not to be critical of anybody on the team in terms of the timeliness of that communication, but these are the kinds of things that I think that there are gaps that we need to have a mechanism to address or even a policy that says there are certain pieces of information that need to be updated on a timely basis, and here is why. It could even relate to, you know, vacancies and hiring and those kinds of things, right?
As a public school teacher, I think you're not going to get away from that, though. There's always going to be rumors and there's always going to be personnel matters that the school district will not disclose. I don't see how the school committee could make a statement about individual employees as they're leaving.
Again, you are projecting the solution. I'm looking for a policy that says, you know, these are these types of gaps. How can we effectively address these through some sort of practice or policy?
Ignoring that unless the real issue is...
I don't think we can do this, we don't have to do it. But I'm telling you, there's a serious gap.
From my arguing perspective, we have to get our, if we have messages about things, we should be getting them out there first and clearly and factually, not in response to things, but preemptively. If there's an issue that we think is going to come, we should address it factually and quickly and publicly and honestly. Not in response to a giant Facebook conversation that took place over the span of three days, but upfront. Or if there's going to be, I'm trying to think of another example that doesn't have to do with personnel.
So I feel like we're coming back into the management of the school, and I would say that's more of a technical.
Well, no, I'm looking at the actively counter misinformation by sharing, the actively counter misinformation by sharing accurate, consistent messages across various channels, including social media, email, newsletters, and public forums. I think that's perfectly reasonable. I don't, I mean, I don't see anything wrong with sharing accurate, consistent messaging across various channels. When we did the budget discussion, we were very open and honest, and we shared pretty accurate and very accurate and consistent messaging. We had very consistent messaging that helped us get the message across about the bare minimum budget, about the needs-based budget and that. And I think that really helped us sell the message.
But I think that the budget is a perfect example of the fact that we ended up spending an inordinate amount of time chasing down things that were irrelevant because someone-somewhere would insinuate, object, or claim something that was untrue, and we ended up having to spend more time on it. One of the things that I tell my clients all the time is, when people ask you about your case, tell them that your lawyer said, I can't talk about it. And a lot of the stuff that gets conjectured on Facebook or is the subject of gossip is things that we really shouldn't be talking about. And like, to the extent that it's like, get your bus form in time, that's fine, but like, I just feel like if we're going to be tasked with plugging the dike every time somebody complains on Facebook, that is all we will do. And I think that having this idea that we're going to go out and counter this information is not being the first mover on giving out accurate and consistent messaging. It is responding to everything that somebody says. And I just think that like, this is a perpetual time suck that will never work.
The only solution I honestly see with these kind of like Facebook things is literally just saying, have you talked to the superintendent? Have you emailed the principal? Have you emailed the teacher? Have you contacted this person?
Or watch the school board meeting.
Anthony, let me counter with an example. Someone close to me lives in a different town and told me, our superintendent makes $300,000 a year. And I said, no, they don't. And they said, yes, they do. I know they do. I was told they do. I saw it on the superintendent's budget. And I said, you were looking at their budget? And they said, definitely. And then I went, I, this person's not dumb, I went home and I looked it up. And what had happened, because I went on Facebook then and I searched for $300,000 in superintendent in that town name, in that town Facebook group, which is a nearby town, that particular town releases their budget in a slightly different way. The superintendent's office budget was 300K, which was everybody, like, all that office salaries. Somebody on Facebook had read that line wrong and repeated on Facebook, which the person who said to me, the superintendent makes $300,000, does not have a Facebook account, has never been on Facebook, does not engage on Facebook, is elderly, none of their friends are on Facebook. So someone on Facebook had said, the superintendent makes $300,000, and repeated a false fact unknowingly, probably not on purpose, and said this thing, and ended up being corrected, but the fact was stated. And then someone else saw it, and then someone else repeated it, and then another person in the town voted against the school override in their town, which failed based on the fact that the superintendent makes $300,000 a year.
So we know, we know there's a lot of false information on Facebook.
But, and that's why I, you know what? When someone in our town started saying the wrong information about our superintendent's salary, I kind of looked at it and went, no, I just...
But as chair, I'm going to have a hard time responding to every Facebook post that's...
I mean, I think, I feel very limited when we're, oh, no, can't say anything my lawyer says not to, because information just ends up in this echo chamber and people end up with the wrong information.
I mean, but this is like really saying that voters are uninformed, right? That we cannot fix. That is a problem.
But we can provide clear, concise information that they can find that can, that can set the record straight. And part of that is, you know, is potentially addressed by this activity. I just, you know, I fundamentally disagree with you, Tony, and I don't think we're going to come to an agreement on this, and maybe it isn't a goal, but the net-net is that public perception matters. And we don't, we are not sitting here at a defense table. We are sitting here trying to advocate for the benefit of our kids. And we have got to be clear with people in terms of what we're doing and what the situation is within our purview, particularly when that situation is being misinterpreted or false information is being circulated about it.
So do we feel like we need it as a goal, or do we want to just have, try to work on being good communicators?
I think...
Well, I think we have, we have a policy issue that I think we, you know, I mean, we're hamstrung, right? I mean, if you take your extreme example from last summer, I sat my whole weekend on my camping trip, you know, in Foxborough between Metallica concerts, watching All Hell Break Loose on Facebook.
Couldn't say anything.
And I couldn't say anything.
And it was, I mean, I...
So, I mean, you know...
That's a protocol issue.
It's personal matter. We shouldn't have...
No one should say anything. Why are we doing that? No.
People are gonna, you're not gonna stop them.
Personal matters, can't say anything.
And there were good people trying to...
Yeah, that is, I guess...
Try and do something.
...do good on Facebook during those discussions.
Look for the help.
But you're not going to stop the misinformation.
But I think our goal should be the first step, which is, maybe instead of phrasing actively counter misinformation, just share accurate, consistent messages across various channels.
I like that.
Just let's share accurate, let's share timely, accurate, consistent messages across various channels.
Can I, what I had done with that first action step is I had commented that I believe families get that through the superintendent's...
Updates.
Updates and stuff, but I do not believe the public at large gets it. And a lot of the problems we have are the public at large, not the families. I'm not quite sure what we do, because if we put in the ledger, they charge us a fortune. So that doesn't work. And I'm not sure what we do with that to get information out to the public at large.
So let me...
Budget information or facility plans. Suppose we decide, we get this Turkey Hill plan thing all ready to roll, how do we get it to people?
Talk to a reporter, we talk to a little...
So perhaps, perhaps...
They charge us money.
Perhaps the goal, the problem here is that the way the goal is written does prescribe the outcome. And I think that perhaps this, the goal should be that we're going to workshop this and come up with a policy or a plan or a level of expectation when it comes to communications that we can live by. Because we don't have a policy on this at all.
All right, let me wordsmith goal three again, and we can get back on that one.
That's a good one.
I think so. I think, yeah, because I think we're all...
And feel free to send any feedback between the next meetings.
Because we are projecting the, we are projecting the solution in here, and I don't, and we don't, we shouldn't necessarily do that.
Yeah. And then goal four, operational excellence and employee support. Again, I think we're good on leaving that one out.
And we don't need four goals. We're going to have enough probably getting through goal number two.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I think goal number four is entirely...
Goal number two is going to put us under. So I think, I think four should be gone, and let's look at three again, and, okay.
All right, moving on. Next item on the agenda is reports. Can we just go down the line, starting with Laura?
All right. All right. The Turkey Hill Elementary School SAC met on 9/23. The door is being replaced. The film is on, except we are waiting for a few cracked windows which needed replacing. And the phone replacement project was greenlit for the 911 compatibility, and nature's classroom is leaving next week.
Yay. Such fun.
Oh, I know, she's, mine was very exciting.
The high school advisory board met last Thursday. It was a very brief meeting. Mrs. Santri asked, requested feedback relating to the school improvement plan, which I have provided via email subsequently, and we're in communication right now asynchronously around some issues there that hopefully we can address as part of the school improvement plan, maybe not. Next week, the town manager screening committee will be meeting on Monday, where we will review the community profile that is being drafted by the consulting firm, Community Paradigm Associates that we hired. They are completing this week their interviews with department heads and other stakeholders. And the capital planning committee will meet on Wednesday of next week.
The middle school, school council met on the 24th of September. They had a great start to the year, very big grade six class. They have had a lot of turnaround due to obviously budget cuts and bumping and all that jazz, but everybody's working their way in and working their way through. Things started well. We had to look at his improvement plan and we will, and get back to him on that. They talked a bit about that the Alice Plan is changing to Alert, and it's an upgraded drill, and that we will learn more about that as the year comes through. And their next meeting is the 15th of October. FinCon met on the 26th of September. There are two vacancies. Now, not that anybody really is listening, but somebody out there, if you are interested, there are two vacancies on FinCon. It is a great place to learn about the town. I have learned a truckload, and I have never been on FinCon, but I've spent five years watching FinCon. So I have learned a great deal about the town. There are two vacancies. Ms. Tevira stepped down and now Ms. Passios. So please, 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 if you think you might be interested, be interested. They're going to vote recommendations for special town meeting warrant by the 13th of October. There was a discussion of the financial plan, proposed financial plan, which led to discussions about how the town scraped by last spring barely, and Evan stated more overrides will probably be needed. Personnel issues are all over town as far as the low pay goes, and the budget task force is looking at that. There was much discussion about a budget presentation template, but it was not completed. A MART update, which was really cool. The MART has a very, you know, if you call and you say, I need a ride, and they'll give you a ride within like three miles and five miles and 10 miles or something, and it's a different price for each length you have to go. They have decided because of the closure of Neshoba, they will transport individuals to Emerson. If your doctors have been transferred over to Emerson from Neshoba, they will transport.
Wow.
I mean, you have to pay, but they will transport. And that's, that's huge, particularly at traffic time.
Oh, my gosh.
That's a very long ride.
Incredible. There was some discussion of the possible split tax rate. This would benefit residents, but increase commercial taxes, including farms. No one has reached out for grant writing services, I believe, because no process has been established with which to do so. There was yet the perennial discussion of consolidation of town departments. And the special town meeting is at 5:00 PM.
What?
It is at 5:00 PM on November 12th.
Son of a... We're never getting out of there.
Let's say that's a Tuesday.
Well, if they start at seven, you won't get out till midnight. If they start at five, maybe we'll get out by 10.
I wanted it to start at noon, like...
On a Tuesday?
Sure, whatever.
That's not going to work.
I don't think that's going to work with school.
It's a Tuesday. They are starting at 5:00 PM, so that's what I got.
November 12th, 5:00 PM?
November 12th, 5:00 PM. And he double-checked as he was saying it, because they all went, what?
Because they're anticipating it to take a long time, or because everybody's getting older and we're getting tired and cranky at night?
Don't know.
Tell me about it.
Budget task force, this week we had a presentation from a very knowledgeable, handsome, and well-spoken gentleman.
Was it you?
It was Mr. Peter Beal.
Oh, it was Mr. Beal, I thought you were...
Did you see the YouTube thumbnail?
Yeah, I did. Fight! And we talked a lot about the capital planning process and some possible reforms to the capital planning process, including mandating the town manager to produce a fiscal forecast. It was not clear to me, and I don't think it was clear to at least everybody but Renee, that we ask for spending priorities, but we don't know how much we have to spend. And that strikes me as bananas. Another thing that Carter had pointed out, by the way, I think Carter has done an excellent job. He answers all of our questions.
He's great.
And he gives us simple, clear, and practical advice. One of the things he pointed out was that one of the problems that we have is that we have to mail out warrants via mail, and it takes so long and it's so expensive. He said that he thinks that we could save like $2,000 to $5,000 a year if we switched how we did that, but that would require a charter update. The other thing that was brought up was making proposals to municipal design committee and... and capital planning about having project funds matched or anticipate inflation. And then the final thing that we talked about was, unfortunately, we are going to do a presentation at the special town meeting. My hope is to make it take under five minutes. Carter had budgeted ten, I told him five, and then I said three. So, my goal is to do it in three minutes. It will be Ezekiel and I, and we will basically be soliciting people for ideas. The way that the budget task force plan was laid out is that like the first half was like information gathering, and then the second half of the meetings is like proposals and ideas, preparing for updated special town meeting, and then finalizing the feedback after town, the special town meeting. So, if anybody has any ideas about how to save money, how to find money, if you know where the couch cushion is in this building that has one point six million dollars or however much, please let us know. We'd like to have some input, input from the town.
Thank you. The primary school met on September twenty-third, the open house had went well. It was more opportunities for parents and children to have choice, move around and go to different areas of the building. One difficulty was that picture week was that same week, so the gym was taken up, so they didn't have the gym accessibility, so next year they will not have picture week the same week as open house. They're definitely looking for paras and even substitutes. The nurse is out till November twenty-second or twenty-third, they've been doing substitute nurses. They went through testing, and now they're looking to give the supports for the students that need those supports. They also did a staff survey on culture, and they're, they're gonna survey the parents as well coming up. The Lunberg Municipal Building Design Committee met on September twenty-third as well, and we're gonna continue to meet on the first and third Mondays now on a more consistent basis. The RFP was finalized and should be going out shortly. That was all I had. The next item in the agenda is public comment. I'll open it up to public comment from the public. Seeing none, I'll open it up to public comment from the committee. Next item in the agenda is topics for future discussion.
I don't know when we're gonna talk about this next, but the decision to either replace or repair Turkey Hill, I know a very vociferous person who shares my same name, that has done a lot of building rehab, and he had asked me if I would ask the committee if he could present on how they would go about refurbishing as opposed to replacing Turkey Hill. I don't know if there's any interest in that conversation, but he had asked me, and I'm obligated by blood to make the request, but I don't know if we wanna do that.
Thank you, I'll see what I can do.
Okay. You're opening up a Pandora's box.
Previous slideshow of previous pages.
Oh, my lord.
I kinda just wanna slide to the previous one.
If he's, if he's as quick as you with your five and three-minute presentations, we might be able to pull it off, too. Then we good. Any other topics for future discussion?
No.
Alright, moving on to item fifteen.
I make a motion to adjourn to executive session and then close meeting after that.
Second. Oh, wait.
Oh, to conduct.
I withdraw my second.
I make a motion to adjourn to executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel.
Second.
All, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, thank you, everyone.